Okay, Charlie, thank you. We need a motion to open the meeting, so.
Make the motion to open the meeting.
Mark, make the motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by Casey. All those in favor? Okay, we're gonna, we'll open the meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November fourth, two thousand and fifteen, Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Tom Wakefield. The members, to my immediate left is Casey Bailey, to my immediate right is Mark McCabe. Dan McDonald will be here shortly, and we can do the public hearings. We're just, in absence of that, we're going to take care of some regulatory business, and Julie House is here tonight, as is our town attorney, Jeff Blake. So, the agenda, let's see. We have a bill, an invoice from Urban Harbors Institute for a hundred and twenty dollars, and remind me to tell Dan that the eleven twenty meeting he was going to has been canceled, but the eleven sixteen meeting on Main Street Havel will go on as scheduled. So this is the work, this is the bill for the workshop.
And that's for the forty B meeting where I go to.
And the other bill that we have is a bill from the Eagle Tribune in the amount of two seventy seven seventy six. And, as well as, a bill from Julie House, the administrative assistant for four oh eight seventy eight.
Do we need a fourth signature from Dan?
Not, not needed, it's not, we're all set, we can, we can do, we can do it through this. Okay, so now. Okay, so. I need a motion to accept the Urban Harbors Institute for one twenty. Motion approved.
Make the motion approve it.
Seconded.
Okay, Mark, Casey seconded. Alls in favor? Three zero, this one is passed, okay. Next one is Julie House, administrative assistant for four oh eight seventy eight, need a motion.
Motion accepted.
Mark, Casey. Alls in favor? Okay, that passes. And then the Eagle Tribune in the amount of two seventy seven seventy six, motion, Mark.
Motion accepted.
Seconded.
Casey?
Seconded.
Any discussion, I guess, no discussion?
Yes, there is a discussion.
Go ahead.
Remember we were talking last meeting about trying to cut back on the...
Yes.
Well, I found the Gazette, and Havel was using, zoning was using the Havel Gazette.
Okay.
Okay, so, we could cut it back quite a bit of money if we use that.
Was that for a ZBA?
ZBA meetings, yeah. So, I think we said that we were paying, we could reduce it, seventy five, a hundred and something dollars.
Well, wasn't that the prob, wasn't there a problem though with advertising?
Well, if Havel's using, I don't know why we can't.
I think that we were talking about the, the timing.
The timing.
And, so it's on Thursday, so we would just have to have it in the week before.
Can you put it in, can you put it in earlier than, than required?
It's, I think the statute says no less than fourteen days, no less than six days.
Can you, should you put in more?
So.
So can it go on on the Thursday, the thirteenth day and the sixth day, as long as it's within fourteen days?
No, it would have to be before.
Because that comes out once a week.
Yeah, see, we talked about the, the timing of, of getting it in there.
It's a matter of whether you can get the notices done.
How do they do it? They got a different deal?
Well, can we have it so that the applications can, need to be in by the first of the month and not the tenth of the month? And that will buy us enough more, more time.
Yeah, you see, yeah, but, by having, by having the way we do it now, the applicant has more time to get the application in, versus if we do it the other way, then.
Yeah, that's true, and Havel has more full-time people, and they probably meet a lot more than us, right?
I don't know.
Yeah. I just, soon as it came out, I, I went and grabbed one and I saw it, you know? I didn't see Georgetown in there, I didn't see anybody else, I saw Havel. So.
So if we go that way, we would probably need to change the date as to when applicants would have to have their application.
I, I think what we should do, we should, I think what we should do is we should find out when their cutoff date is, which is, which is, which would, then the next meeting we'll discuss what their cutoff date is, as to whether or not we want to change a cutoff date, because if we cut, change a cutoff date back, backdate it, then it's gonna eliminate people that come in a week or two later.
Right.
And then we'll put them into another, another month. So, it's, it's good that you brought it up, we'll, we'll bring it up, okay? All right, have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll bring it up next meeting, we'll find out the answer to that.
Just to update you, remember you were big on that Havel Gazette thing? I did see Havel advertising in that on zoning.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a good idea, it's cheap.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, buddy, I'm going too well.
Stay down there.
You gotta go home.
Yeah, stay there.
You don't need me, I can leave.
No, no. We need, we need you, Dan.
We need, listen up.
But just don't talk. We need a one body. Okay, Dan can read the minutes. We're, we're down to the minutes now, approving minutes of October seventh.
Is this right on the dimensions? Six by six mudroom? Six by six? That's a room, six by six, Tom?
Yeah, it was, it was attached.
Twelve, twenty-four by twenty-four, and a mudroom six by six attached to home.
Yeah, that's, that's just going out to it, Dan.
The room was only six by six?
Yeah.
It's a mudroom. That's, yeah. Does he need to read it?
What's that? He's, he's reading them.
Yeah.
We're doing a photo. I think it's accurate, I think it's fine.
Okay. Okay, then if, if you like it, Dan, you can make a motion to accept, how's that?
Yeah, so let's see if we go along with the recommendations any, it's a lot of good ones. I make a motion to accept the minutes of October the seventh, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll second it.
Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? This one's a four vote vote. Before we open the public hearing, I, I do have to make an announcement that we only have four members. And, and with four members, it allows us to hear the appeal. However, in order for the appeal to pass, it has to have a four zero vote. So I, I need to inform Brenda Haslack that, that you, you could, if you wish to postpone it till next meeting, where there would be five members, where then a three to two vote would carry. But, the way it is now, you have to have four zero after you.
It would still be four, zero, four votes in, in favor because it's a special permit.
Today, we, we have to have four zero.
But I'll wait, isn't it a special permit always?
Yeah.
Always the super majority?
Oh yeah, that's right.
You always, so, yeah, they, they have no, they have no floor in the year.
Okay.
If you wait and get one other person, then.
They can have one.
A four to one will carry the day.
I got you.
Yeah.
Four to one what?
Okay, a four to one would, would approve the application.
Yeah, four to one, yeah, right.
You need four votes.
You need four votes, yeah. Right, but, but with only four, you got.
You gotta get it unanimous, if you got five, you, you.
With five, you.
Question on that, right from the bylaws, just a question since town council's here. May I ask a question on that?
That's, you through the chair?
Yeah, to the chair, may I ask a question with regards to that?
A question, a question to whom?
To the chair, whoever, whoever.
Yeah, you need to go up to the mic, please, and you identify yourself, that's right. Dan, give me those minutes back.
My name is Charles Harrislack, I'll be presenting tonight on behalf of Brenda Harrislack. My, my question is, just looking at Groveland bylaws, section one oh seven point seven point two.
What is it, one oh seven?
One oh seven point seven point two. It's actually, I think it's actually attached to the application.
All right, okay.
To the G one. So my question, I guess, is, I heard was said about all four having to be a four zero vote in the case of a special permit. My question is, in, in the writing of that, it says, on the last sentence, "Special permits issued by a special permit granting authority shall require two-thirds vote of boards with more than five members, a vote of at least four members of a five-member board, and a unanimous vote of a three-member board." Is there a place where the four-member board is listed in this provision to say that it has to be four members, or is it three out of four?
No, it, it says, a vote, at least four members of a five-member board, okay?
But there aren't five members of the board present.
There's only four, but you need four members, has to vote. It says a unanimous vote of three, if there's a three-member board, we, it's, right now we're four, so you need four.
Understood, so you're saying it doesn't, this is not meant to reflect the size of the typical board?
All I'm saying is, we're a five-member board, okay? And when, when four members are here, you need to have all four, because out of a five-member board, you need four votes prevailed. See, it says we're here, it says you need, you need at least four members of a five-member board. If only four of those members are here, you need those four members.
And that's correct, the town council believes that's the correct interpretation, I'm just.
That's what it says, read it.
Yes, I know, I see what it says.
Let me, let me read it a little slower, so, so you might be able to catch it.
Thanks.
It says, "A vote of at least four members of a five-member board." Hold on, hold on, hold on, are you, are you with me so far?
I'm totally.
Okay, we're a five-member board.
So normally we're a five-member board.
Yeah, we're a five-member board. One members aren't here, I'll repeat it again. "A vote of at least four members of a five-member board." Okay, so, we, we happen to have a blank member that isn't here tonight, but you still got a four-member board, five-member board, you need four votes.
And there's no alternate members to sit in.
We don't have any alternates.
We don't have any more.
There are no alternates.
Okay, I just, I wanted to have that on the record.
Yeah, there are no alternates. So, I mean, you have an option to either.
Yeah, I know.
Will the town be able to comply sixty-five days after her application went in in order to make that happen?
All I can tell you, you have an option to, so this, this is a little different, this got remanded back from the court. I'm not sure that, Jeff, is it?
I think all proper notices.
Uh, we, we had to.
I got the data, I have the date of September fourteenth, so I'm sure you, you're looking at, uh, but if you were, if, I, I think what the chairman is saying here is up to you, and.
Yeah, we, we'll hear it.
You can certainly extend the deadline by agreement. But if you, I, I think what he's saying, and, and, and he, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but, um, if you want to go forward, you can go forward.
Absolutely.
Or you can extend the deadline, and then we wouldn't have to worry about the sixty-five days. That'd be your option.
December second. What'd you say the date was, Jeff?
I thought the date of this was.
Yeah, no, it's August eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry, September fourteenth, yeah, okay, yeah, so you have plenty of time.
September fourteenth was the date?
October, November, you don't have plenty of time to do it, you've got some time to do it, but.
Yeah.
But if they want to extend it, they can.
So it's up to you, either way, it's a four zero, with a five-member board, you're still in.
Hearing within sixty-five days.
Excuse me, anybody? We're, we're still going on on this one, hold on a minute. What do you think, Jeff? They can, but we, they can, they can extend it if they want to.
Yeah, they can extend it if they want to.
Okay, go ahead, wait up here and identify yourself, please.
It's just continued.
What's that?
My name is Sandra Branas, I have a question as relates to the four members. In the event that we did, put it off, isn't there a requirement that the fifth member, could we just do four members every single time, and this could kept, keep getting continued and continued? I think a resolution is required here in a timely fashion.
Well, let me just tell you that, and I, and if you'd like to see it, I can show you. I, I got an email from the fifth member today at, right here, at four, four fifty today, right here, four fifty PM, says she wasn't gonna be here. So this, this isn't something that we planned, it's.
Right, but I'm saying.
We're all volunteers and, and her, her, she said unable to attend because she's stuck at work, so.
Well, respectfully, Mr. McDonald here is sick as a dog.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
So I'm just wondering, let's say we extended it till next month, and then you're sick.
Yeah, well, that's.
Unless the problem, that's why we have alternates, we don't have enough people on boards.
I mean, this is, this is a volunteer board and.
There used to be three alternates on here, I was an alternate, I was a third alternate. They, and, and the, one of our selectmen was an alternate, and he'd resigned, just on Monday, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, to say that we can have five members here every time, I, you know, I'd like to think we can, but it, it doesn't always work that way. It didn't happen till, like I said, till four fifty, I was at my computer doing some things and.
I just heard tonight.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna hear it tonight if you want to, and, and we're, we're going through it. But, but I just want you to know that, that in the past, every time we've had only four members, we've, we have informed the applicant that we have four members and it has a four zero, so, go, if you, if, but bearing that in mind, if you, if you'd like to go, go ahead. Make your presentation.
It's not a bad thing, I mean, it, things have improved, you know?
I mean, obviously this is a remand, I don't even know the record, did you hear me, this is a remand.
Well, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this first, though, I want to tell you that first. Now, now, if you want to proceed, I'll read the, the agenda item. So the amended application of two thousand twelve dash seven dated August twenty eighth, two thousand and fifteen by Brenda Haslack, owner of premises located at ninety-four Main Street, Groveland, plot zero three one dash oh four, lot ninety-four, in the RV residential zone for a special permit to operate a specialty, specialty candy and gift shop in a form of home occupation according to all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland bylaws, including section three oh one and section fifteen hundred. This is a rehearing of this matter, and is being held in accordance with the September seventh, two thousand and fifteen Order of Essex Superior Court, the Civil Action Number thirteen dash zero seven three three. We're all set. You're, you're up.
Good evening. My name is Charles Harrislack, I live at ninety-four Main Street in Groveland. I'm gonna be presenting on behalf of Brenda Harrislack this evening to talk about her special permit for a home occupation.
Can you hold, can you hold on one second? Charlie, you got a problem?
Yeah, are you having the hearing?
Yes.
Have they agreed that four members are there?
Yes, yes.
Did you do that?
Oh yeah, no.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they did, because they're proceeding.
We're presenting in front of the board that is here today.
Yeah.
It was noted that's our work, that is why the board.
Go ahead, sorry.
So, I'm here to present on behalf of Brenda Harrislack, as mentioned by Chairman Wakefield, this was ordered as a remand to be reheard on this matter. Just to give some background, I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight, both the people that volunteered for our town, and also the people that came here either in support or with concerns of this proposal. As it is a remand, I just wanted to give this a little back history, just to state, as people might not know what happened. The original hearing was on January eleventh, two thousand and thirteen. There was a presentation, and then a decision came in on April eighteenth. All five members of the board were there at that time. Three members of that board at that time voted to deny the special permit, and two members voted against the denial. And that decision came to Brenda on April eighteenth, and from that decision, she filed an appeal on May fifth of two thousand and thirteen, which went to the Superior Court for judicial review, and has been in litigation until now. And then on August twentieth, it was remanded back for a rehearing. And the reason for that was on one of the complaints was a procedural defect. And notification of the general public and the judge felt that he didn't have jurisdiction because of that procedural defect. And we're here today to have another hearing, so to make sure everybody's known everything's done correctly. There were other complaints in the original decision with regards to be it, it being arbitrary, contrary to law, as well as excess in authority, those merits of that part of the decision were not discussed at that time. And this is just a rehearing, so we can present to the board again. And we like to do that, you know, with the best of intentions, so everybody can see what Brenda wants to do, which she feels is a good thing for the town, is gonna be something that's not detrimental to, to the town, and it's gonna be something that is gonna add some nice character to the community or program. And I'd like to start now with some examples. As I mentioned, two of the people from the former ZBA voted against the denial. If it was something where clearly there was some kind of law that, that drew that conclusion, you would assume it might be a unanimous decision, but it was not. So the two people that voted against.
Excuse me, let, let me just clarify one thing.
Sure.
One of the members voted a negative, but it, but it wasn't because of the application, it was because of, of another issue that wasn't what you're portraying, okay? It was because she didn't understand one item, she voted negative, but it wasn't because of what you're telling the other members.
All I'm saying is that.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just clarifying for you.
Okay, I, I can't make assumptions to what the reasons were, but my thought was.
I'm not giving, yeah, well, I just want to clarify that, so, so that the other board members, and, and the, and the lady that, that did it was Janet Moran, Jane Moran rather, and we had spoke to her afterwards about whether she was voting because she wanted it, and she said, "No, that wasn't why she voted, she voted because she, she didn't understand one item and, and it just, it slipped by." But that, you know, you gotta keep calm, sorry.
Very good.
Procedurally, this is a new hearing, so that's all irrelevant, right?
It is.
Yeah, I, I'd rather, I'd rather that you just get, get to the point of, of, of the application, because Dan's right.
The good thing, I don't know any of that about what happened before, so you get a, you get a, you get a blank.
Dan wasn't on the board.
I wasn't on the board.
Is me, these three here weren't on the board, so I think you should start, make clear.
That was exactly it, and we wanted to, to show, you know, we thought maybe there was some things missing from that previous application, so we wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on what you.
Yeah, I, I think what you should do is just go over this application, so the board has an idea of what you want it to.
Okay, so first, well, what I'm gonna do, I, I will get to the application. I want, I want to show a little bit about, you know, there isn't any type of site visit in this case, and so I just want to show and, and how this, this particular home occupation is gonna be a specialty type of retail. So I want to make sure I share that with the board and with everybody here of what the intentions are. It's mentioned in the application of what rooms are gonna encompass, it's less than twenty-five percent. Brenda primarily lives at this property with her six children, and she raises and cares for them, and it's part of the residential use of the home. This is going to be an incidental use as a home occupation, and I just wanted to show some of the ideas for this home occupation. This is the front of the room, left side of the Savory Mansion. The intentions for this room are to house shelving and tables, as depicted in the photographs, but not exact. Many pre-made themed gift baskets would be displayed on the shelves and tables in this section of the shop. They would contain specialty gift items, such as candles, artisan soaps, jewelry, lotion, greeting cards, bulk candy, and other gift ideas, with some products being made from local artisans. The specialty gift items may also be purchased separately, or purchased to make custom-made gift baskets. Here's a picture of this, that section of the house, these are just sort of ideas. As you can see, this still has the feel of sort of a, of a home, these colors are very, you know, nice browns and things like that, and, and some of the, you know, it has definitely a home mom and pop type of appeal. Not pictured in this section, Brenda also plans to share two of the Rufus Porter murals that are part of the home, and it's been part of its historic nature as part of the Town of Groveland, to share with the people that come in, into the, the home occupation shop. Yes, I'll pass that around, and then I can pass it around. Okay, the next room of the proposal for the home occupation, it's the middle room on the left side of Savory Mansion. This would be the penny candy room, it wouldn't be self-serve, customers would be served in the glass jars that will line the counter, and this room will also have a nut-free zone of confections that are safe for children with nut allergies. Our little guy actually has a peanut allergy. So, all of the, of all of your favorite nostalgic candies will be found here. These candies will be wrapped as favors for special occasion events like weddings or showers. The candies can also be sold individually, boxed as a gift, or incorporated into a custom-made gift basket. Again, what I'm trying to stress here is that these are specialty type of things, these aren't convenient things that somebody's coming down to visit and, and pick something unconvenient, it's not, it's the purpose of gift giving, whatever that might be. And this is just some of the presentation that will happen in this room. And then to the left of this room here, there's a, a left-side entrance. None of the entrances to the home occupation are going to be on the main street, everything will be to the left of the house, of the property. And so one of the entrances will be there, there'll be two entrances to the.
I'm just curious of one thing.
Sure.
Just way back, when I, before I bought my first house, when the Garettes owned that, I rented the left side of the house.
Yeah.
I remember that house used to be eight bedrooms, three bathrooms, three kitchens, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a very.
Three kitchens.
Absolutely. There's a lot of space in the house, so, like I said, you know, this, this use is something that really, it's, the primary use of the house is going to be living there and raising the kids, and then of course, Brenda would like to conduct the home occupation out of this small portion of the property.
Where'd these pictures come from?
The pictures of the candy things and things like that.
Yeah.
We got them online, I mean, it's just, they're generally just ideas.
It's an illustration of what you want, what you want to do.
Well, it's, it's a hometown, it's a hometown mom and pop deal, this isn't something that, you know, you see a bunch of gallons of put milk in there. You know, the sodas are, the pop, the pop that you might get there isn't gonna be something like you get a can of Coke. There is actually somebody that's in town that actually makes sodas, and packages the sodas, and those type of things would be sold. And again, it's for really the purpose of, of people that want to have a gift and, and give somebody a gift, or, or stop in maybe for a little treat, that is something unique that you typically wouldn't, you know, get at a CVS, or some other place that would be, you know, where you would just get general run in the middle of the line, it would be gift type of a treat or candy or a gift.
Experience of it as well.
It's the experience, yeah. So, I, I, this is the final, the, the last room of the Savory Mansion on, on the. So, I, this is the final, the last room of the Savory Mansion on the, this is in the rear of the left side. There is another entrance there. This room has the second entrance to the shop. Customers will find prepackaged specialty coffees and teas, honey from local beekeepers, jams and jellies, old-fashioned soda pop and other gourmet gift items. The intent is also to have a flower refrigerator with pre-arranged, pre-wrapped flower bouquets. This area will also have a back room for some storage and cleanup of the glass jars to be in compliance with Florida health and serve safe requirements. There'll be a checkout counter and also a gift wrapping and basket creating area. I mean, the idea is to have people who would also create their own baskets, maybe right on the spot. Pick a few things from the stock, basket it up, they take it out for the gift, and, you know, and they're all set with something unique. And this is all gonna be found in that section of the shop, so that. So, I'd like to take a moment just to speak a little bit about, you know, the Groveland bylaws written in, I think it was nineteen fifty-four. This is something that people wrote into the bylaws with some type of intent. They didn't want to have anybody have any type of home occupation, they didn't need to put it in there at all, but they did. So, you know, some of the things and the way the bylaws were written, there's section three oh one point two oh point two that says customary home occupation is allowed if the ZBA authorizes it. And then, it goes on further in Appendix B to talk some of the ideas of what a home occupation is and what it isn't. We feel that Brenda's idea for a specialty shop, a home occupation falls into what it's not limited to. It does mention a dressmaker, and it also mentions an art studio. So, Appendix B of the zoning bylaw states that a dressmaker and art studio is an allowed form of a home occupation. In addition, I do wanna mention, because this is a remand, and it's important for, I think, all of us to just understand some of the things that were in the prior decision and what this decision might be, that the judge ordered this remand, saw both of these uses as forms of retail. A dressmaker, as compared to ninety-four Main Street's special permit proposal. A dressmaker may not only make dresses to specification, but she may have pre-made special occasion dresses for sale in her shop or his shop. The shop may include accessory items for sale to go with the special occasion dresses. Similar to that, the specialty candy and gift shop will sell items assembled in the form of gift baskets and their favors. And then, items that are also incidental to these gift baskets could also be available for sale separately. An art studio is compared to ninety-four Main Street's special permit proposal. An art studio does not necessarily mean an artist must be the resident occupant, according to the bylaws. An art studio may display and sell art items from other artists. Specialty candy and gift shop will sell gifts made by local artisans, either separately or incorporated into a gift basket. The specialty candy and gift shop may also sell artisan chocolates and other specialty confections. The art studio that I just took a picture of in here, this shows to the right how many different artisans have their pictures and the things for sale in this type of shop, which, again, is something that our Appendix B says would be allowed in an art studio. So it's the same form of picking something out, might be a gift type of picture, and buying it just like a normal type of re. So, on that. I just wanted to, you know, again, this is, this is a case, it's for the record. And, you know, this is where it really comes down to sort of the heart of everything. So, like I said before, you know, I know this is a new board, but it's important this time that, you know, we look at this case with a new set of eyes. The one thing that I think, you know, we expect to use in litigation, so it is valuable, I think, to understand what the original decision was and some of the other concerns would be. The original decision, again, stated that retail wasn't allowed in RB Residential District. And that's the only thing it stated in the final decision on April eighteenth. This was discussed at the trial back on August twentieth, and I just.
Excuse me, it wasn't.
Well, I'd like to just add that to the record. I have audio that we've motioned.
Yeah, I was there as well. It wasn't discussed, okay?
Okay.
So don't, you know.
It was, it was brought up as, this was brought up.
No, we're here, we're here to, we're here to talk about, it was remanded back to talk about. I'm not gonna talk about the court, okay? And you're not gonna talk about the court, 'cause I won't allow you to, okay? We're gonna talk about what you wanna do, okay? So, you wanna continue?
I do.
Okay, but I don't wanna hear anymore about what happened to court, because I was there, you were there, they weren't, and we're not gonna discuss it.
But I think it's relevant.
It's not relevant. You can think what you want, I'm telling you, we're not gonna.
I don't wanna hear about it.
I don't hear it. We're gonna hear about the case tonight, what you want a proposal, we're not talking about the court. Okay, if you wanna talk about the court, you'll be at the court next time if that happens, okay? You understand that? You understand that? Good, thank you, we have an understanding. Keep going.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I mean, can we start just with the rule of law and have him go through what he believes that, why he conforms to that as an application?
Yeah, he wants to talk about the court. I don't, you just talk about his application.
I didn't want, all I didn't wanna talk about, all I wanna say is that there was a decision made. And, I mean, there's three things, all right, that obviously we need to prove to you, all right? Is that what we intend to do is customary, all right? That it's secondary and incidental to what Brenda's primary use of the residence is. And then, also that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. And those are the things we wanna present.
And that's what you need to do.
Okay, so that's what we're presenting today, so we just.
So listen, we're not gonna talk about the Superior Court.
As long as we're on the same page.
We're on the same page, you know.
Unless the judge invalidated our bylaw, then I wanna start with our bylaw and just say.
Yeah, he didn't know.
How does your plan comply with the bylaw?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. It was a procedural issue.
It was a notice issue, from what I know.
It was a notice issue.
Again.
And since it, 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 it could have been detrimental in a, if the judge had ruled in the town's favor, then the applicant could then appeal that based on the notice.
Procedural defect.
Procedural defect. So we remanded it back. It has nothing to do with anything, any facts of the case.
It wasn't on the merits of the case, it was procedural.
The merits were not discussed.
That's absolutely right, but.
Okay, it was, it was all procedural, so I don't wanna discuss, I don't know. Listen, hold on, hold on, I'm talking, I'm the chairman, okay? Please. Yeah, that's the way it works in this here, okay? The chairman runs the meeting, not the audience.
I guess you do.
Okay, and if you don't like that, okay, the door. I'm not gonna tolerate.
Say a word, sir, I'm listening to you.
Okay, okay, so you just, you know, just be careful, 'cause I'm not gonna tolerate people talking when they're not supposed to be. And I'm not gonna sit here and listen to you talk about what happened in court, because it's a hearsay thing. If you wanna talk about your application, go ahead. It was a procedural issue, that's why I got remanded back. You proceed on your application only. So continue.
All right, I will proceed on the application only, but I wanna be just clear, and as long as we're in agreement, that it was said that nowhere in our bylaw or in general laws, it says that retail is not allowed as an application.
Now, hold on. Now, how much clearer do I have to be?
Now, I'm just asking.
Hold on, how much clearer do I have to be? That was not discussed in court, okay? Now, if you bring it up again, I'm gonna close the hearing. I'm gonna shut you down, rape them again. That was not brought up, and I don't want you talking about issues that weren't brought up. Now, you wanna talk about your application?
This is not a fair hearing.
Listen.
It's not a fair hearing.
Listen. I'm telling you, one at a time, and that's the way it's gonna be run.
You were doing all right at the beginning, just keep going.
You just keep going, what you're gonna, we're not talking about. Yeah, we're gonna take a, we're gonna, we need a five-minute recess.
That's fine.
Do you mind?
I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
I'll second it, taking it all the way. We're, we're recessed for five minutes.
Sorry for everybody. I just wanna be transparent in all this, everybody just, you know.
We're gonna, yeah.
We're your community, appreciate.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'll second, keep going, yeah.
So, the way we're leaving it, just going on with the presentation, is that?
Yeah, yeah, but, but listen, in absence of a transcript, certified transcript of the court proceedings, we're not gonna talk about the court. Just talk about your application and what you wanna do.
We are, this is, this is a motion and an audio that came from the court with an approved motion.
Listen, no, no, we're not talking.
Okay, so I'm just, I.
You know, it's not, it's not a certified copy, so a certified copy of the transcript of the court.
Very well.
In the absence of that, let's talk about the application right here.
We're gonna continue with the application.
Okay?
All right, we're gonna continue down the rest of the presentation.
Thank you.
Tom, can I say something?
Go ahead, go ahead, Dan.
And I get your point. If you read the bylaw, it doesn't say wheat tails prohibited. Is that your point you wanted to make?
It's the point, it's not, you know, it's not my point, it's just that this, this, this is something, you know, and I apologize for the emotions here, you know, we've been, you know.
I understand, you're passionate about your class.
No, it's, you're passionate about your idea, about the town, and we don't wanna do anything to anybody any harm. Brenda doesn't wanna do anything to anybody any harm in doing this. She's just looking at the bylaws it stands today, okay? And, you know, the reason why this is remanded in the first place was from a nineteen sixty-six case. And so, that, that was the case that was brought up, that remanded this back on a procedural defect, it said that not only do the parties of interest need to be ones that are notified, but there needs to be, it needs to make sure that everybody is notified through the paper. And that is what was said by the judge there. And so, it's the same thing with, you know, past decisions that were made. They, you know, they define what Groveland is becoming and has become. So, that being said, I mean, I'm gonna continue with the presentation, because I do wanna address some other points that were brought up at the previous hearing, that we felt were important to the people, and so we did work to address them. So I will take a step further and do that.
I was hoping you'd, the home occupation, right?
Yeah.
It goes down, it's customary, carried on in the dwelling, bup, bup, bup. It goes down a whole, I was hoping that you could address.
I totally.
Each issue, so that we're not jumping around.
Absolutely.
Methodically, if you could work your way down the bylaw and say how you, you fit in there seamlessly, in harmony, then that would be a lot easier to make a decision, or that's all I'm just saying. 'Cause procedurally what happened before, this is a de novo, we're supposed to be unbiased, covered in here fresh. You've got the blank canvas, it doesn't matter to me what happened previously. If the remand was on a factual or interpretive error of law, then we would've got those instructions from the judge, but it was just a procedural defect of notice.
Okay, very good.
So, we're starting over here.
Okay, so as long as everybody's clear.
Yeah, that's what I.
We're starting over, so that's why.
Very good.
That's why we can't hear that, because it's prejudicial to, it's potentially prejudicial at what other members voted on. We're not bound by who voted for or against it, I mean, it's just, or influenced in any way by that, I'm not.
Very well, so.
So, I just wanna clear the air on that, so.
All right, so I'm gonna proceed and talk about some of these other issues, and then I will get to the application, where, you know, I feel like the proposed calculations go down, and we address the points in the rule of law and the bylaw. So, the next thing I wanna talk about is, and again, this is to the idea of being detrimental to the neighborhood. That is one of the key things that we wanna show that we're not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. So, traffic was something that was brought up, and I'm just gonna give you each of the report. And it's a report for corroboration. I was in contact. I was in contact with a gentleman, Giles Hamm from Vanessa Associates, who do traffic studies, we talked to them, you know, we told them that Brenda's invested a lot in this case already. And so he just gave us some guidelines of just to sort of look at the traffic where Brenda's home is on Route one thirteen. This is just, you know, you guys can keep those copies, I put a little note just to some of the charts. And again, this is mainly just to show that the data that I'm gonna show you on my thing here is, is, is consistent with data taken by a professional. This is two miles eastbound away from ninety-four Main Street, so these are traffic patterns, two miles eastbound. You know, and they talked about a major complex going into this area and how it really wouldn't impact anything significantly, and they made some conclusions there, which are on page twenty-four. So what I did on, with Giles, you know, Hamm's suggestion, is we just took a little brief thing, this is in this table here. Traffic data at mile forty-one point six, which is on ninety-four Main Street, we took a couple days in October on Saturdays and Sundays, and then also just last night rush hour type traffic on a Tuesday, so these are the peak times, this is what defines that residential neighborhood. This isn't work drive where it's a circle and people aren't getting a lot of flow of traffic, this is an area where people had purchased a home on one thirteen Main Street, and the total actually winds up being average weekday traffic, well over seven thousand vehicles per day. The little data snippets that I took were just in ten minute intervals because it's difficult to take for an hour, so it took ten minutes and multiplied by six. And we looked at directions going west, east, west, around one o'clock, fifty vehicles, thirty vehicles, forty vehicles, and this is in a ten minute time period. And then on Tuesday night around five o'clock, if you think of the peak hour, we have forty-nine vehicles and sixty-seven. So, you know, vehicles per hour, we're looking at as much as three forty-two, three hundred in one way, so in both ways you're getting around six hundred vehicles.
Now, hold, hold on, now, are, are you telling the board that you're getting three or four hundred vehicles at, at an hour?
One direction.
One direction?
Yeah.
Going by your property?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Where is Wetstone Street?
It intersects with one thirteen up by, I don't know if it's as far as.
Never heard of Wetstone.
Yeah.
It's in West Newbury.
Rush hour, it can't be, you know.
It might be West Newbury, now, now, th- th- this, this report is not, not, uh, uh, this is not subject to, the subject isn't ninety-four Main Street.
It's not ninety-four Main Street, the reason I did it is because we did take some data, all right, and I, I wanted to share the data that we took on ninety-four Main Street. But the point, the point of the matter is, is that the charts on page seventeen of that report, if you look at that chart, it shows vehicles on one thirteen. It shows sort of the peak hours of traffic, you have as many as six hundred cars going past that location.
Can you come here and just verify that this is?
Sure.
Yeah, how far away is this?
Now, you're, you're talking about this chart.
This build.
Okay, these, these, these vehicles are passing your house?
No, they're passing that point at one thirteen Main Street.
No, 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 but, but, but is it going by your house as well?
Well, yes, okay, so I'm, I'm making some assumptions.
No, I thought, yeah, that's, yeah.
But I'm, but I'm doing that with.
How do we connect the dots to your house?
It's two miles away.
Yeah, so, so.
So, so one thirteen. Same road.
Same road.
So, this is one thirteen traffic, all right?
At peak, at peak times.
At, at peak times, but, but look, but a weekend.
Eight to ten in the morning, I mean, what's peak times there?
Well, peak times that they took, they probably took like four o'clock, five o'clock.
Rush hour.
Peak times, rush hour times, but even on a weekend, you know, we took some times at two o'clock on a weekend, we have fifty, thirty cars going by that property. And the point it makes is, is from the point of detriment, you know, Brenda's, you know, if you get six people an hour, six people an hour is like less than one percent. And that's assuming that all of them are like, oh, I'm going to this particular place that I know it is, and it's additional traffic. Most likely, her business is gonna be passerby traffic, you know, you might get somebody that says, oh, I gotta get a quick gift, I gotta go in ten to fifteen minutes, you know, in and out. And then, you know, the other thing, when you look at a customary, you know, look of a property, that, a lot of people have a lot of cars. You know, this is, a lot of people wind up having four cars, six cars, it's currently, you know, you could have as many, you know, as eight cars on each side of this, of this particular property, already has a lot of space. So, from a residential na- nature, this is actually a neighbor right across the street, they have six cars right there, you know, parked in their parking lot. So this is the type of thing that if somebody were looking from the street, all right, so there's six cars parked there.
I don't see a problem with the traffic in the beginning.
It has a residential nature.
Because, uh.
Depends on how good ya, I mean, that could be a line down the street to get your kid.
And, and, yeah.
Could be like a block, like the jaws come up, you know, around the block.
Back, back twenty years ago, you didn't have the development next to you out back, okay, see how many cars you got coming out of that street? So whatever, I'm not saying Brenda's not gonna have much of a business, but I'm saying, whatever she has in there, as far as traffic, I, I don't think traffic is, is a big deal with it, especially when you have that new condominium association out back there, so I think you can really.
It's an issue.
I don't think it's an issue whatsoever.
I wanted to bring it up because I think it's important for people to see, I, again, I'm just defining a residential neighborhood because it's very easy to say that everything's the same residential, and, and it's not, not everything.
I mean, you got, you got a, you got a house that was three kitchens, three, uh, eight bedrooms and three bathrooms, so back then, when Mrs. Hickox rented that out, how many cars were actually in that house anyway? And you're probably not gonna have as many cars at a time. Okay, probably not back then, probably five or six, so I mean, there's probably not gonna be five or six cars in that yard at a time, so traffic thing I don't think is a big deal.
It's about good ya, I mean, you get good stuff, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, you know.
It could be ultimately like cars down the road, like I said, this is a residential home, she's, she's looking to, to conduct this business during reasonable hours that aren't. Her shop, during reasonable hours, you know, that isn't gonna be a detriment to this, to her, her, her niche.
Oh, and traffic's an issue.
I don't think traffic's an issue at all.
You comment on the customary carry on.
I am, I wanna talk a little bit about.
At one thirteen used to be a lot more busy when four ninety-five wasn't around, everybody was heading to the beach on that road.
You go through the, the bullet points.
I, I will.
Cause, cause, cause it's like the, the legs on a table, you know, you have to meet these elements or you're failing. A lot kind of go along, like you told me, you know, when you, you know, when you're on that defense, you just, you know, it doesn't matter if you put the hole in the front of the boat or the back of the boat, you just gotta put a hole in the boat, it's second, so you gotta keep this thing floating here, so you gotta meet all your elements, or you gotta, you know.
So, go on, go on, go on, let him, let him go on.
Last thing is just, it's just to talk about more from, from a detriment customary, you know, this doesn't necessarily, you know, apply to bylaws. I'm, I'm just to speak to whether or not Savory, I can imagine will be a detriment to a neighborhood. Brenda drew a comparison to a shop that many of us probably know, it's Fowles Corley Market in Newbury Court. Not having anything to do with differences in bylaws, I understand there may be some different zonings, but just to show similarities between the two. Fowles is situated in a building with residential attached, it's situated on Route one thirteen, state road in, uh, the same state road as Savory Mansion. Fowles neighborhood is predominantly residential, Fowles caters to its customers with prepared meals and gourmet meats. Their hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, ten to seven, Sunday, twelve to five, they offer parking on lots of the building. Fowles has been in business since nineteen oh-three, over a hundred years, and it is a specialty shop, and considering its longevity, it clearly hasn't been a detriment to the neighborhood. Again, similarities to Savory Mansion, a specialty shop, that's key here, this is will be a specialty shop, it'll be a specialty home occupation. Similar hours, and then people live in the building, and then just, you know, some history of local family stores, Parker Store, three generations owned it. Again, this was a customary mom and pop type shop, talking about residential homes. Yeah, that one was actually incredible, so if you didn't want to see any of this, I could pass it to the audience.
Yeah, I wanna see the sign. I wanna see the sign.
Did you plan on putting a sign up like that?
No. Can I see, can I see this sign?
Okay, so, Fowles sign, it's right there above, or attached to the building, so, um.
I don't know what it looks like now.
Yeah, so I'm, no, I think.
So the sign, can I, can I ask a question, Chair?
Go ahead.
The sign you wanna put up here, is that gonna be detached from the building and out on the front lawn?
Yes.
With laminated light?
No.
No light at all?
We, we don't, nor due to the hours of operation, that was the old, that was an old application, I mean, the, the current sign, I, I'd like to just get to, I think it's important, you know, like Dan keeps mentioning.
Hold on, a little bit, yeah.
Talking about the permit and the stipulations stated in, in the permit. These were proposed.
You, you, on your, uh, it might help you, on your application under the second section, uh, it says state hours of operation. You've got exhibit A, I don't see an exhibit A.
He said A is the post stipulations, so, you know, what we did is, is we took, you know, we took a lot of stipulations that were from past decisions and, and sort of just came up with some nice stipulations that we felt, Brenda felt would match. I, I have, sorry. So.
Exhibit.
If we go down and look at the stipulation, the proposed stipulations in exhibit A, a lot of these address some of the bullet points that you mentioned, Dan, in, in the actual law. So, these are proposed stipulations for granting a special permit for a home occupation in the form of a specialty candy shop, carried on wholly within the principal residence of ninety-four Main Street, over the application right now. This is exhibit A, you guys have your, the application that has that.
Yeah, I, I was looking at, I, I went to exhibit B and I went back one page and it wasn't there, so I see, I can't, sorry, my, my mistake.
Okay, so, so hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, ten to six P M., Sunday, twelve to six P M. Extended hours leading up to major holidays, but no earlier than eight A M. and no later than nine P M. Again, the reason those times were given is that included in the application, there was a, an, an old decision from ninety-seven, where the hours in operation actually went as late as nine P M. and as early as seven A M. And that was in exhibit F four and F five, that was on one twenty-one Main Street, which is an R V residential district. And in that decision as well, exhibit F five.
One twenty-one, that's, which one's that?
That's the, it'd be a little posh shop, perhaps, or.
Oh, yeah, 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 the posh shop, yeah.
So, right, so, like I said, so that was the first one, hours of operation. The second one is off-street parking to the left of the residence, as depicted in the mortgage plot I had submitted with the application, that's exhibit B. As far as, you know, paving this area, Brenda can do this without a permit, this is just driveway, she can enlarge her driveway in that particular area, so there's really no way she was doing that, wants to do it anyway to have it to, to ride around a bit. But, um, the lighting in that particular area, it isn't gonna be residential lighting, this type of lighting would be seen after. Going upwards and type of thing you can see next to a driveway, not huge lights that are coming down, or even the light that's right across the street from the Main Street will probably provide more light than the lights that she's gonna have. And the hours of operation, there's gonna be a whole lot of need for a lot of lighting. So, we mentioned again downward tubular limited or residential light post style lighting, no outside storage, no large delivery, deliveries on premises. Um, the sign, a single sign not to exceed two square feet and supported by a hanging post or other similar posts. Right next door is eighty Main Street, and they actually have their sign eighty Main Street right there hanging on a, on a post that's in that area with their, just their number on it. Now, as far as two square feet, which is in section thirteen hundred of the bylaws, it says that for a residential home occupation, that two square feet is the limit. These are some cutouts actually of what two square feet is. This is two square feet circle, two square feet square.
Could you bring it up so that Mark could see if he asked for anything, I mean, if he wasn't real sure what it was, I wanna make sure that Mark.
Yeah.
Sure, so these are, I cut them out to the dimensions, and that's what two square feet looks like.
All right, so I went to Bintucket, all right?
Jeez.
One by two.
I had a hard, yeah, I had a hard time figuring out what two square feet was, so we, we wanna make sure that Mark is, is on board here, thank you.
Home occupation, and this addresses one of the bullet points that you mentioned, Dan, is the home occupation is conducted by resident family members only. Brenda's intention is to operate this home occupation. Other residents that are in the household, she does have children in the household, fourteen, sixteen, her twenty-four year old son is there. Depending on if they want to work from the job, they might, they might not, they're kids. So, uh, subject to all Grohl and Board of Health rules and regulations, subject to all laws, rules, regulations, inspections and other common, and others of the Commonwealth. Big one again, no offensive noise, vibrations, smoke, dust, offensive odor, or glare shall be produced. This is gonna be carried on wholly within that, those, those kinds of, your early and presentation, it's gonna be very. Really hard to tell what anybody's doing inside, as far as noise and dust and things like that. Again, it is a special permit for a home occupation, so it's not assignable.
Thank you.
But it's something that's gonna be carried with the house, it's carried with Brenda and the applicant, that was point eleven. Twelve is the residential home will continue to be allowed, be modified, near as discretion, discretion, subject to Grohl and residential building code and procedures. This, this is a residential property, and we just have that in there because Brenda might wanna do residential things to this property, not related to any other expansion of the business. Home occupation's limited to three rooms on the first floor, as I showed earlier, and that front hallway, approximately eight hundred square feet. Patrons will access the home occupation by the left side rear and left center doors only, so there'll be no one going in and out of the front main door of that home occupation. All other access points are gonna be for emergency or residential primary use only. The home occupation will remain secondary and incidental to the primary use of the property as a residential home. And then just the standard verbiage of no action of special permit or any extension, et cetera, et cetera. We wanna go to, to home occupation, we can go to exhibit G five in case I didn't cover anything in the stipulations, I wanna make sure.
Hold on, just before you, before you go any further from exhibit A, I just want, I just want the board to know, this is very, very similar to what, what the board does in their special applications and permits, however, this is not something that the board typed, this is something that the HSL prepared, it's just over. Cause when I read this originally, I thought it was taken from one of our, uh, one of our applications, but that's not true, this is one that, that you typed up.
This, this was typed up using, using the.
I understand, but, but it's not something that the board did, cause this is very similar to, that's when I, when I looked at it quick, I'm reading this and it, it wasn't familiar, so.
Is this the bylaw or abreviate them, or is this extracted?
I'm not sure where you are on that one.
What's that? Home occup, home occupation, the definition.
In exhibit G, but.
Yeah, G five.
I think it's just a photocopy of the bylaw, but.
That's the only extension in what it says, home occupation, section three oh one two, one two says a customary home occupation.
Yeah, I wanna. Well, there's also, there's also on the home occupation definitions, there's a, there's quite a bit of, uh, verbiage on that as well.
I wanna see the full one.
Go ahead, yeah.
Can, can I ask you what your argument is on why your proposed business is, or, or, or your argument that it is customarily carried on in a dwelling unit, or in a building or other structure accessory to a dwelling unit? Do you have any examples that, like, for business you want to have in your dwelling unit as, as customary?
Well, as being a home, as being a home occupation, I mean, what I would consider customary is what's written in the bylaws, being a dressmaker and being an art studio. And these are similar type of things, now, specialty type of uses can be in the form of even antique stores and things like that. And these are type of things typically are done in a resident type of occupant, because what is in there isn't out of convenience. It's not something that is, you typically go to a convenience store for, it's something that you go in there for a special reason. You know, which prevents expansion as well, when you go to someplace for a special, particular reason, for a special type of gift for somebody. Just like someone might wanna have a special dress made, or get a special piece of art from an art studio for the purpose of giving and getting.
But wouldn't that a home occupation is actually somebody like a dressmaker that has a website? And somebody looks on that website, or looks on the town cry, or whatever it is, and says, jeez, I like that, and it's by appointment only.
That could be one way a person approaches that as a dressmaker, but it's.
Because what I'm saying is, now, just, just hear me out, because I'm just trying to go by the law, so in other words, it's by appointment only. So in other words, it's by appointment only. So in other words, if there's a sign out there that says Brenda's so-and-so, Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Smith drive by with their three kids. Oh, I didn't know that was there and they drive in. That is not a home occupation. Correct?
That is, that's not how home occupation is defined in the Groveland bylaws. Now, home, the Groveland bylaws doesn't sort of define what somebody necessarily would be doing if they were driving by the property. It provides for use of the sign in section thirteen hundred. So, that being the case, the home occupation was intended to have an actual sign out there. I mean, I, I would speak to, again, past decisions, just because it sort of defines.
What I'm saying is, if we put a sign out there, okay, we miles extend the commercial district all the way from Groveland fairways down to the people who own that barn across a Marmak River Road, who've been trying to have businesses in there since the eighties and have been thrown out, I don't know how many times. It's not a sign area.
Did they live in the residence?
No, they did, they own the residence, they pay taxes on it.
It's fine.
Okay. I'm, I'm in favor, I'm in favor a lot of it, but I'm not in favor of an assigned outside. If there was an old fashioned sign on the house, like it said, like somebody had your old, uh, so-and-so family established something that was attached to the house. But to have a sign out by the, yeah, out front, is there gonna be, is there gonna be a light on it at all? Nothing?
It doesn't need to have a light, you know, that's why I'm saying, like, when, when you talk about just the look of the neighborhood.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be.
Understand.
I just don't want to open up a can of worms and say, okay, why can't I open up a Subway? No, I'm saying that's what's gonna happen. It's gonna happen. Someone's gonna say, you know, we had an instance here, I wasn't on the board. An in-law apartment is supposed to be attached to a house. All of a sudden, a pool thing was approved. Now they have people coming in and it's just, you know, we just gotta, we gotta look at it. You know what I'm saying? Right.
The, the only, the only comment again I can make on, on signs is that in the past, right on one twenty-one Main Street. And again, you know, if anything, I feel like Brenda has done everything she could to conform to the law as.
I think it's the perfect house for this. There ain't a better house in Groveland for this. Okay? Cause I know the house and I think it's gonna look awesome inside there. I have a problem with the sign, that's all. Okay?
Yeah, if it was on the building, I think it would maintain the character better.
And I have no problem with the traffic, because if somebody has, there's any problem with traffic, believe me, I've been in town since nineteen sixty-two. And I lived there for six months when I was buying my first house and, you know, it's less traffic, you know, it's, it's this, it's nothing wrong. They built the condos out there, so there's nothing wrong with the traffic, but I just have a problem with the sign. Okay? Cause I just think we're gonna start. You know?
Look, let me ask you, let me.
I think if, once people know the place is there and it's, it's, well, go ahead, finish.
I, I, you know, again, I, I understand, you know, what you're saying from that perspective, you know, they all, I can only go, you know, based, I mean, we did this based off what was written in the law.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and so if the law was going to say that home occupation shouldn't have a sign, I mean, it should have been written as such.
I ain't saying not having a sign, I'm just saying not having a sign.
The location.
But in the location, like that's, so it would say something. I would think, you know, more specific saying, sign cannot have anything, um, outside of the house to hold it or something like that. But the, the, the challenge with the sign thing, again, and I look at past decisions, I'm not trying to.
Discretionary.
It, it is discretionary, but I, I am looking at it from the standpoint of decisions that the board made where right down the road at one twenty-one Main Street, the posy shop, they even went so, outside of the size that, of the allowable sign for a home occupation.
That was been around since the sixties.
That decision says a twelve square foot sign. I mean, that's very big. So, you know, I, again, I understand the concerns and the board's gonna decide what they want. I'm just, you know, we'll, you know, make the argument that thi- this type of sign, I don't think is gonna guarantee necessarily. Um, I think you're more concerned about the community saying, oh, this person has it versus.
Just more concerned that someone else is gonna come in and say, we've already had it with someone else with a the addition.
The way I interpret our bylaw is, it's a matter of degree, okay? You have a home occupation and, you know, they list what you have for your dressmaker. Uh, they list professionals, physician, dentist, lawyer, I mean. A dentist could have a charity, could have, you know, hundreds of clients coming in, so. Uh, but it's what the image is outside the building matters. So, you have to maintain the, uh, the, 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 the harmony and the aesthetics of the residential neighborhood, the character of it. So, you know, to take it to the extreme, you can't have, you know, a, a D L line out there with blinking, you know? So, so that's the extreme. So somehow it has to be kind of an out of sight, out of mind, it blends in, you know, like your camouflage.
Brenda, can I ask you a question? Would you have a problem having a sign on the?
So.
I'm sorry.
So, it has to blend in with the scenery. So, how far you get away from that is, it's a matter of degree. That's where the discretion comes in.
Dan, I think, Dan, you know, I think you've hit the.
Do you agree with me?
You, you, exactly right.
So if you're trying to say that, if no one knows you have a business there, you know, I'm a.
Home occupation is, and I'll give as example, it's like you go to a barber and you want to get a haircut, but you don't want to look like you got a haircut. Okay? That's what, that's what the home occupation is. Someone's gonna drive by, don't know that you have a home occupation, that's what you're referring to.
Right, right.
You're gonna drive by and, and.
We're at a barber shop.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I mean, what I'm saying is, is it, it has to look like a residential house.
You could, you say, I'm gonna open up a frame shop at my house and I'm gonna do frames, but meanwhile, hey, I got this candy here. Hey, wanna buy this while you're here? I mean, you know, I don't even care about that.
That's what he's referring to. It has to, I mean, I, I have an.
It's just that you can't drive by there and say, oh, I didn't know that was there and then pull in. You know what I'm saying? When that kind of sign.
It has, it has to be, it has to be a situation where it, 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 like I said, you get a haircut, but it doesn't look like you got a haircut.
You drive by, there's a little sign and it says knives sharpened.
Yeah, thank you.
You ever seen those?
Yeah.
See, I go up to Maine occasionally and everyone in Maine, it's like, nice house, trailer, nice house, mansion, shack. Oh, God.
Careful, Dan, careful, Dan, up in Maine.
And I, you know, my grandfather.
Hey, we gotta know we hits, got some property in Maine, so be careful.
Got some roots up there, I just stayed in fact. So, they have home occupations, everyone up there, you know, they sell water, they. They got little signs, no one. Dan's small engine repair. That kind of stuff. But it, it doesn't walk and talk and look like a, a duck. Or, or a business, it doesn't.
You know what he's saying.
So the extremist, the golden arches of McDonald's and then there's.
Go ahead.
Knife shop.
Okay, Dan.
So I'm belaboring that, but how is it minimal is what it is? Does it fit in in harmony? That's the gist of the bylaw, harmony.
We have another attorney you'd like to speak.
All right, let the other one.
Go ahead, Casey.
Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, with the, the plot plan that you've included, you're showing the existing driveway, I just wondered if you could describe a little bit about, um, how wide it is at the street and what the curb cut looks like?
The curb cut?
Yeah.
Uh, the curb cut's quite wide, even though the driveway, I don't have an exact measurement of it, but the curb stands past where the current driveway is. Um, so, you know, the idea in that spot is, that used to be, you know, leach field in that area, so it's in awful shape. So, we would allow people to have places that they can turn around and not create an issue with people backing into traffic, which is why the plot plan sort of shows that area where they would be paving.
Well, they can actually come in and turn right around in there?
You'll be able to turn around.
Oh, no kidding? Really? Yeah.
So is the drive, is the, so you've got where it says grass sloped, is that gonna still be grass there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, will this little, um, spur be wide enough for two cars to pass is my, my real question?
Yeah, I think probably not, yeah. Along with. The minimization sort of, you know, we don't want this, you know, this, this is the type of thing where somebody wait for somebody to pull out, you're not gonna have traffic coming and going like a target. So that would be the idea.
Cause the proposed, and you got in, in quotations, B I T, what does that mean?
Bituminous, I think it's bituminous. Asphalt, asphalt.
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
asphalt.
So, so the.
The, the.
Roundup, hot top.
That drew that up.
What's that? Roundup.
They drew that up broke bit and maybe you need to get asphalt.
Bituminous.
The intent would be to pave that area.
That area would be paved.
Bituminous product, that doesn't actually mean paving. It means.
Um, and then I, I didn't know, and this may be beyond the scope of our province, but, um, if you're expecting any, um, exterior work to need to be done or, or even interior work to, to make it compliant for having customers like, I don't know, like ADA compliance or anything like that, I just didn't know if, if there's any exterior construction going to be involved.
There shouldn't be any need to exterior construction other than if, if the areas outside of the, um, either, either door would have an ability to have a, a ramp and someone did want to take a wheelchair into the property.
Are you familiar with ADA requirements? You know ADA, American Disability Act?
Yes, I know American Disability Act. I don't know the requirements.
Yeah, that, that, you're required to have a, a ramp, uh, one to twelve.
I just wonder how it'll affect the residential character.
There are, there are, there are other issues that, that much, uh, Casey brought it up there, there, um, by having a, um, place of business, if you will, in a residential, uh, z, uh, dwelling, it's gonna, it's gonna require other building code issues, uh, separation between the living area and that area is, is, I'm, I'm not the building inspector, but I have been in the past and, and I can tell you that, that there are issues of, uh, codes that would have to be met. Uh, basically fire separation, one hour separation between the dwelling unit and the store area.
I think for our purposes, it's really, you know, whether it affects the residential character of the, of the area, but that's, that's why I brought it up, but.
Thank you. Any other ones?
That was all I had so far, but I'd love to hear if there were more. Do you have any more to, to say, I guess?
Keep going.
I did, you know, I wanted to cover, I mean, just to clarify, I was just speaking to Brenda there. I mean, we, she, she doesn't have any, you know, intentions of, of opening this and starting this until it's right in all aspects and meeting all codes and things like that. You know, again, she feels like it's going to be something that's gonna be a nice add to the town. Um, a place where people can get their gifts, you know, um, maybe for like center Beijing, come down during the holidays, pick up a few gifts. And maybe, you know, something for, you know, for the talent people to use and then of course, other people if they, they want to come in and pick up a gift there. Um, you know, so she wants to make sure that everything will be right and meets those type of codes. Um, you know, the one thing I, I'd like to add, and again, I know this has been long, and I really appreciate everybody that came out tonight. Um, is. Is, yeah, did I mean everything, did I speak to everything that you asked me to speak to with regards to, um, the points of, of hen's teeth?
As, as to why it's customary?
Yes. Um, I mean, like I said, this is, this is a specialty type of home occupation. Um, it, it is not something that was, you know, listed as something that.
Nothing will be eaten, uh, uh, consumed on the property.
It'll be carried on by a member of the family resident in the dwelling unit. It'll be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling in residential purposes, which the majority of dwellers being used is residential. Um, it is an occupation or profession that's carried on wholly within the principal building or within a building or other structure accessories in the building. Um, no person outside of the family shall be employed. Uh, there's, it says no exterior display, no exterior sign except as permitted under section thirteen hundred. I would say again, section thirteen hundred provides for a two square foot sign. Um, no exterior storage of materials and no other exterior indication that a home occupation or variation from the residential character. Um, no offensive noise or vibration, I put that in the stipulations. And again, in particular, it said, a, a home occupation includes but is not limited to the following. Um, so these items that are listed here, uh, they mention art studio and dressmaker, which I spoke to earlier, talks about professional offices. Um, but it said that it should not be interpreted to include a tourist home, a barber shop, commercial stable or kennel, a restaurant or tea room, dancing instruction, bad instrument instruction, convalescent home or mortuary establishments. It doesn't say anything in this bylaw that says specialty gift shop or specialty candy is, is in the.
In the last, uh, meeting, it was discussed that there was a, wasn't, we anticipated, uh, clientele may be, uh, children come up from schools.
There's no doubt, I mean, that, that could happen.
Isn't a school very near there?
Um, yeah, Pentucket is near there. Pentucket, which is, it's a high school, seventh through, uh, middle school. Um, there's crosswalks at Broad Street and there's also one, um, uh, down the way a little bit, you know, which there are crosswalks and we see by the middle school. So, um, you know, and kids are on bikes all the time. I mean, I think the nature of the, the, the safety portion is, it is Main Street. Um, you know, I would think people take extra precautions in this area versus they would. So it's not like someone's gonna be playing street hockey, like on a circle, and then all of a sudden there's a place where people are coming, you know, to, to go into a home occupation. This is already a place that has sort of a, um, a, a, a Main Street type of road. You typically would tell your child, you know, you're going out on one thirteen, you know, be careful when you're crossing, obey the type of laws that are there, use the crosswalk wherever you can, um, carry the light or trick or treating. Um, and that would be something you want to tell them. Um, I would like to mention just, you know, again, we, I, I know we have a number of people that, you know, might want to speak. Um, I do want to mention that I looked, or we looked at the, um, at the others list and the people that had signed petitions on the previous, you know, request to do this, um, are all still in that property. Um, so unless they're here tonight from the standpoint of being against it, um, I would like to just list, announce each one just as a, for the record and support because.
We have, we have.
We have, we have it all.
Okay, so as long as that's the case. Um, and then, you know, the other part is more addressing stipulations. Um, there are just some other home occupations, um, that are listed. Exhibit D one, um, was up back to the framing. Again, I received a home occupation.
He got a special permit from the zoning board.
Yep, to, to do a home occupation. Um, the other property that is on there is really because it's on Main Street. Um, four forty-one Main Street was a very recent decision, um, understanding that some different zoning law applies. It is a Main Street type of property, um, and wanted to include it mainly because of some of the hours and the security that's put in there. Uh, and the other one that I feel, you know, that we feel is, um, you know, very similar in nature mainly because it is an R V residential district. Um, it is something that is the intent of what Brenda plans to do, the craft type of shop and especially type of shop, was one twenty-one Main Street, which is currently not operating right now, but it was a decision made in nineteen ninety-seven, um, by the C P A and Brenda, um, a special permit.
One twenty-one?
Yeah, one twenty-one.
Posy shop?
Posy shop was around the sixties.
It, nineteen ninety-seven is the decision.
You mean the street number?
Still among, owned that back in the sixties when I was four or five years old when I walked in, so I mean, I was there a long time.
So, um.
It's a, I think the decision does note that it was an existing use at one time.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
But it sounds like it was expired at that time and it seemed like reopen again for, um, similar type of use. Um, so, I mean, in closing, um, did I cover anything?
What's, what's the rest of the street like? What's, what's, what do you think is like that? I mean, there's no way out, it's on the right hand side going towards.
Yes, it is. And it's the large yellow house.
What, what's around there?
It's adjacent to.
For the racket, can you talk about, you know, who's next door, who's two, uh, uh, three, four? What's, what's the character of that?
Yeah, how many, how many home occupations?
Yeah, so, so in, in that particular area, there is another home occupation. It's, it's a little bit different on one oh six Main Street. It's curious creatures. Um, it is different in its nature. It isn't the same type of intent, but again, it is a home occupation.
What do they have for signage? What does that look like? That, that's a, just like a house?
It is, it's, it looks like a house and you would go.
Wouldn't even know it's there.
You probably wouldn't.
I didn't know it was there.
What do they do?
I've seen them, they, they show up at kids' parties and, you know, bring the alligator and that stuff.
Yeah, they have a number of animals there that, that wrap their business up.
Do they host?
Little red squirrel house that has Christmas stuff and there's probably forty cars, forty cars parked there too, you know?
You got a little alligator.
And it's a residential area, you know?
I don't know, I'm a kid, he has nobody, he was little when I saw him.
I mean, this is a small strip again, you know, I understand it's a small strip of residential. It is budded by business, both in West Newbury and business district, not commercial district, I believe, is where it hits Broad Street, um, right where the old creative, uh, creative children, whose creative minds used to be. I think that's probably where, where it changes. So, I mean, up in Down Main Street, you know, you know, you have Mira's a little bit further down. Um, you have the Leo's down, so I mean.
It's the closest business I'll buy.
That, that's the half mile probably.
One fifty-six Main.
Well, no, uh, uh, Nix, 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 Nix.
That's West Newbury.
So closest business would probably be that little preschool there that.
That preschool's in a resi, that preschool's in a residential area.
That preschool is in a resi- that preschool is in a residential area, but it's pre conform for farming, it's it's been.
Nonconforming.
Nonconforming, preexisting.
And then and then Delio's.
There's nothing further down than the town hall.
There's nothing, well, uh.
Right across from town hall.
Uh, what the the uh parcel that that uh Mark had brought up was was across from Kentucky, that's a garage and that had come before the board for a.
The side.
Yeah, just the side, which is not just off from the hustle and it came for a um uh paint booth, they were gonna do bodywork there, but that that got turned down.
Back in the seventies, there used to be a machine shop in there.
Was it owned occupant, did the owner do it?
Nope, his name was Eddie Curtis and then the old car was, no, I'm not gonna go back over.
Yeah, well, but 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 the question, the question was, what was in it and that got denied, that's probably.
It'd be a little more industrial.
Yeah, that was probably, I don't know, I don't know, twenty, tw- tw- twenty, twenty, twenty five, no, no.
Did it go out?
No, it was a house up and back.
House and back on and it's not a home occupation either.
The house and back, the garage down by the road. So that that got denied, but but uh and then the the daycare on the corner, a dentist came in and got approval under the same type of situation of four forty one Main Street where the board had determined that it was um equal to or not not greater than the prior use of a daycare, in fact, it might have been quieter rather than maybe.
Oh, definitely quieter, yeah, but he never did anything, huh?
No, it didn't, it it didn't happen, but but he did get approval, so that other than that, there 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 are not a not that I'm aware of any any uh, nothing's come before the board that I've been since I've been on the board. Anything else?
No, I was only, we should hear from them.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, just speaking into the property, this is a unique property to grow, there's no doubt, you know, and so, you know, I would expect that you might not see the same type of thing. This is a a property that has an ability to do this and have a home occupation of this nature. Um, Brenda's moved here in two thousand eleven, uh, she's been here for four years, uh, she's a community member, she votes, um, she comes to town meetings, um, and she plays a role here. And so, um, you know, I I want to agree with what feels is right within the law and I feel like you've given a presentation tonight that shows that it is something within the law. Um, so, uh, hoping that you find this as a as a favorable uh type of proposal and, um, thank you for your time tonight and I don't know if you have to address that.
No, well, well, uh.
I was gonna ask you about, you know, this got the signage, were you you planning on putting any displays in the windows or anything, it's all gonna just drive by, it's a house with curtains and shades and it's the hot, keep on going.
Yeah, I I mean, I, Brenda's at your tent and uh it's just gonna be. Windows aren't gonna change. No flash lighting. Wobbling in the outsides.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, well, you you all set? No, because because we got we got some other people who I'm sure wanna speak here, right? Thank you. Okay, now, uh, are there anyone else in the audience that's that uh is in favor, can go up one at a time? And let's not have everyone like repeat the same thing, so we 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 get it, so if someone wants to speak in favor, give your name, so it's for the record. Move it over the podium, please. Yeah, your name and address, please.
Um, my name is Lenora Katnich, and I'm at fifteen Lindsay's Way in Groveland, so I'm right around in that corner of the association.
Could you repeat that again, cause I don't think she got it, I'm sorry.
Your first name?
You gotta talk up just a little louder.
Lenoa, L Y N O A, and the second name is Katnich, C A T T A N A C H. Just a couple of points that I thought were really interesting, I'm relatively new to this community, probably guessed by the accent, um, and I think that.
Sorry for me.
It's alright, it's all right, you know, we moved in last year.
And I, um, I think that house on the corner that Brenda's in is is beautiful and I would absolutely love to see inside it. I don't feel as a newcomer to this community that I've seen enough of the history of this community, enough of the character of the community, and I think it's something that binds a community, you can't understate it. We also live in a climate, a political climate and an economic climate where local investment and local businesses are extremely important. And I also have three children, I live right up in that corner, I would love for my three children to be able to go down and go to a local business, to a local shop and buy local produce. It's extremely important, it's also important in the aspect of um supporting mothers who are able to make an income at home. That's another really, really important moral decision, not only economic decision. The other aspect that I thought was really interesting, we brought up the other business, Curious Creatures, I actually right live right on the back of that business. My my garden above theirs, their land.
Why I got thirty alligators?
Yeah, well, that is, it's interesting you should say that.
I mean, yellow.
I hear all the animals there, so we're talking about disruption and noise and signage. They don't have signage because they have a huge long driveway that you have to get go up to get actually get to the property, but by God, can I hear those animals sometimes and it's noisy.
I guess they are.
But you know what, it doesn't bother me because it's something that my kids and my kids' friends benefit from and the community benefits from. I as far as I'm concerned, the more investment, the more color, the more interest in a community, the stronger and the more interest in that community is, and that that's all I've got to say on the mark.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak in favor? Your name?
My name is Linda Vino.
And your address?
Nine Kingsway in Groveland.
What was that again?
Nine Kingsway. And, uh, I've known Brenda pretty much since she moved into the community and I've never seen somebody so passionate about doing this and it's such a cute idea, like, I think everyone should say no to this, it's so sweet. And, um, she really wants to to do it and I actually support her a hundred percent, um, she's got friends who make things and do stuff and, um, she give them a little bit of exposure too, so I think it's a wonderful thing. I think, oh, a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that, Linda.
Now, uh, in favor?
I got one of interpretation.
Uh, go go ahead, come on up, go ahead.
My name's Williams, I'm I'm at, uh, ten Garrison Street in Groveland, and I, number one, I think one hundred percent we should have business in Groveland. I think that we need business and we should promote business. I only have one question to the board, she can answer this for me, to clarify small business, to clarify an in-home business. Are we having an in-home business, I understood it, that an in-home business is something that you'd have a computer in your house, a desk in your house, and that would be an in-home business. I never, never thought that we could now have people from the road going in, buying something, coming out of that house. And it it could be, and I think that's something that the bylaw would state, and I think Mister Haslock went on that point, I'm not clarified tonight that he got the answer I'm looking for.
I think I think you'll get the answer when we deliberate, Phil, I don't.
Well, if it is, good, and I I I hope I value and hope their business does well, but, I mean, I just think that our bylaw should clearly state what goes on and what should happen. It's in in an in-home business, and maybe we we have to straighten out bylaws, so maybe they're not clear on that, maybe there is one.
I think, I think, I think you're getting a little ahead of it, cause we'll we'll discuss that at the, yeah, at at the, thank you though. Anyone else wanna speak in favor? Go ahead. Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, I'll get you, but I didn't see it afterwards, you were like, yeah, you're, yeah, 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 you gotta, way up, like like in school, yeah, okay, go ahead, what's your name?
Oliver.
I'm sorry.
Oliver.
Anyway, your address?
Four twenty two Main Street.
Did you get that? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanna add.
Where's four twenty two Main Street?
Oh, right across from Shannon Fields.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I just wanted to add that, um, Brenda's a well-lived community member. I I always get that, I I think I'm speaking well, Brenda's a well-lived community member and she's, can you hear me now?
Um, tell me.
And she did a great deal to the to the community.
I get to my hair and eat up.
You do.
It's not in the bylaw as a requirement.
Um, but I think also, I I grew up in Andover and I have fond memories of going through to a local candy shop and, um, there's, I just think kind of the hometown feel is something that's very, very important in the community. And that's something that I love for my my daughters as well. And I know when I go to look for a gift and you're going to Newburyport or Andover, I never think to go to Groveland, but if there was a shop like that, I would think to go somewhere similar.
Thank you, thank you. Now, Green. You're up. Kate Claude.
Kathleen Delisle, three Hemlock Lane.
What is that in relationship to the property?
Far away.
Hemlock Lane is Rocky Woods. I bet you love to have that there.
Rocky Woods.
I I just think that in terms of you, if you're going to do a home business and bring some additional economic development into the town, this is a good thing to do. You're, it's not gonna be like, you know, a a target where you get cars coming in and out. And, you know, the whole push is to shop local, support local, and like Paula said, like, you need a cute little gift, you go to Newburyport, you go to North Andover, you go to Andover, cause there's no place in town to do that. I think a lot of us moms that are, I mean, I'm back and forth, I I'm surprised your numbers were actually frankly that low in terms of the town. I'm literally back and forth two or three times a day to the middle school and it's it's a prank.
Let me just, let me just show you, she has something with you, so that she, so you might understand where the board's from, see, see this this right here? I don't know if you can read it, but it says the town of Groveland zoning bylaws. Okay, so the the board, uh, is appointed by the town fathers to enforce the bylaws, okay? Now, what you're talking about how you'd love to see these stores, there are locations in town that allow by right retail stores selling candy and etcetera. This is a residential zone and home occupation, so it's up to the board now, based on the the criteria of the ordinance, to determine whether or not it meets that criteria, so it's not.
But there are exceptions in the bylaws for this.
Well, no, 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 it's not, no, it's not, no exceptions, it's pretty clear, but anyways, it's it, what you're saying is is very nice, except that you gotta realize that that we're here to enforce the zoning bylaws and and a retail store of this nature, uh, in a residential, uh, zone may or may not fit it. So it's, you know, I just wanna make sure you realize that it's a zoning issue, not not a an issue that the town doesn't wanna have business, uh, promote more business, local business, etcetera. That's not, that's not the board's purview, the board's purview is to enforce the zoning ordinance based on, uh, the definitions and criteria, so it's, I mean, it's.
No, and I understand that, but I also understand that there's, you know, home business occupancy permits and and provisions for that within the bylaws.
Yeah.
And to support something like this is, um, you know, it seems that this would fit into one of the the provisions in the bylaws. So we would be supporting.
Would you say your your address is three Hemlock?
Yep.
Yeah. Maybe you'd like to start one in your neighborhood as well.
I already work from home, I don't I don't need another.
Oh, another home occupation?
No.
I'm kidding, go ahead. Yeah, I got it, yeah, 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 we'll be up there tomorrow night, I've been enjoying ourselves. Yeah, well, we're sending right up tomorrow morning.
Um, but it's it's just, you know, I mean, there's more businesses closing than there are opening, um, and, you know, in terms of economic development and and having some additional.
I'm glad you brought that up because that that's a very good point, that there's more businesses closing than opening, you know what that means? There's more spaces available for this particular operation to be, uh, put in a zone that allows it.
No, that's terrible, because, I mean, she couldn't open her business where the laundromat was, I mean, that's not.
Yeah, there are other areas that that would allow, you know, that that I'm saying, what I'm saying is that they would allow this type of operation.
But they're not, they're not designed for this type of specialty shop.
I get you, but there's zones, see, I'm 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 only talking zoning, I'm I'm not talking what's designed, I'm talking what's zoning in the town of Groveland.
Right, but this this has a a an exception in the the zoning bylaws to allow for this type of occupancy permit.
Okay.
And so we're asking that you allow this to go forward under those zoning bylaws that are already in effect and in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else wanna speak in favor? Go ahead. We're gonna plug that in, so you get a shock or something, we're not getting that, we gotta get you to talk a little louder, go ahead, what's your name?
My name is Marissa Deshane, I hate public speaking, but I.
Don't worry, we're all set.
What's your address?
We'll get you.
Two sixty eight Main Street.
Where is that?
Right next to the TD Bank.
From the old library.
Drive around.
You read next to the TD Bank?
Looked in your house.
Two houses up, the the old greenhouse.
Dr. Sullivan's old house.
Yeah.
Alright.
I've been watching.
How long have I been?
He delivered me.
Go ahead, can you?
I haven't been.
Uh, no, did he drop you, did he drop him off?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
I've been watching this go on for a couple of years and, um, I just wanted to come here tonight, cause I love the property and I, actually, when it was for sale, I kind of peeked through the windows and looked at the murals and, um, I just, when her idea first came out, it reminded me of a small shop in Marblehead that I used to frequent, um, still eat, and it was the same in the thing of residential area. Um, I just think it's a great idea, I would love to see the help showcase and I love the in-home business and I just wanted to be here tonight just to kind of be on her side and I know that I I don't know a lot about the bylaws, but I just think this town would would be a good thing for this town.
Well, thank you, appreciate you coming. Anyone else that wants to speak in favor? You're up. You're also outnumbered.
Hi, my name's Josh Heard, I, um, I, uh, H U I D, I live on, uh, five Broad Street.
Hold on, hold on, what is it again?
It's Josh Heard.
Josh Heard. Hey, where do you live?
Live on five Twinkle.
Five?
Twinkle.
Okay. Thank you, go ahead.
So, uh, I've said, came down to meetings, I was interested to find out what was going on, um, I'm a local grocery freezer, I've been doing it for fourteen years now. I'm actually intimately involved with the property, I actually bought the proposed property, that property where I first moved into town, um, so I know the house and it's too big, uh, I mean, it's it's too big. I actually wanted to buy it and, uh, I was about cutting up, I'm sort of full condom units, I thought it'll be better, but it sounds, the people I talked to said absolutely, there's no way that's gonna happen, so I, but, um, I think the store sounds great, um, it's it's a lot of cool things about the property, but I felt as a neighbor for the for the area and being in a crazy area, maybe I'm just stating the obvious, but, um, commercial influence is is commercial influence, it's going to affect the value of neighboring properties and that's what I do for the, you know, and I felt like I would be withholding information without stating the obvious, being from the neighborhood, that in my opinion, if I was writing an appraisal on that neighborhood, it would be a detriment to the marketability of the property next door and, um, and again, I know nothing against the store, I think it's an awesome idea, I just felt that I would be doing it to service, but not.
Closing there. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that wanted to speak in favor of it? Cause then we'll, if not, we'll go to the opposite side. Anyone that is opposed to this?
Actually, I'm I'm in favor, but I don't have a lot to say, I just wanna.
It's okay. You can, just, uh, your name and your address.
Uh, my name is Richard Kramer, I am at one hundred Main Street, I'm right next to Brenda's house, the yellow house.
Okay.
Uh, I am in favor of the candy shop, I just wanna, I support the promise, and it doesn't bother us at all that there would be a a business in that house.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else in favor, cause we're gonna move quickly on to, uh, opposed? No one's opposed? Oh, we do, someone's opposed. Go ahead. Tell me your name though, please.
Hi, my name is Alice Fishkin and I'm an attorney here on behalf of Renee Montague and Anthony Tiampa. Do you want my office address?
I'm there at Batters.
Where this, what's your address?
They are directly across the street, they reside at one oh one Main Street, and they unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight. Do you want my office address with a lot of?
No, I I I, that's all right, I see, the one oh one Main Street is. No, I, 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 that's all right, I see, the one oh one Main Street is fine, you're representing those, those, uh, people?
Yes.
Okay, and?
Uh, those folks are, uh, opposed to the candy shop. Uh, as I said, they're directly across the street from the property. And I know we've talked a lot about parking here today and traffic, but, uh, from my client's perspective, it's not just the increase in vehicles going down that street, it is where the cars would be entering and exiting from the property. Um, I, it's on a curve, they believe that that would create, that there's a potential danger there. Uh, in addition, the issue with the traffic extends beyond the actual vehicles that would be visiting the shop as customers. We also have the issue of increased rubbish removal, along with that, if we've got rubbish from food, we've got road ads, that's a separate issue. But, um, so we've got the traffic from increased rubbish removal, we've got the traffic from increased deliveries, all of which would not necessarily occur if this property was, uh, to stay purely residential. This is a, an increase that is happening solely from the business being in the property. Um, my clients believe that this increase in traffic on that curb, in and out, as well as the increased truck delivery, rubbish removal, is a detriment to the neighborhood. Uh, my clients believe this is different from some of the other home occupations listed in, in the bylaw, because all items that from this occupation would be brought in. I did hear some talk about gift baskets and that would be assembling items into new items, but, um, that, from my client's perspective, that does differentiate this usage from some of the other items that were listed in the bylaw as appropriate for a home occupation. Um, as I mentioned, there's an issue of the candy and the food, increased rubbish with that potentially, there's increased varmints, increased animals. Again, my clients live directly across the street. Uh, further, uh, my clients, uh, have some issues with the, where the parking structure is going to be, any lighting on the parking structure, um, any, uh, which is any lighting on the parking structure that has the potential to affect their usage of their home, it goes the way that the lights are situated into their property. Um, and while Main Street may be, uh, in this area, as they've said, I didn't get a chance to look at the, the studies they presented, but from what was discussed, it may be a fairly busy street, it's still a residential neighborhood. Um, and by placing this commercial usage in that area, as we heard from the previous speaker, it will be a detriment to the value of the property, uh, of my client's property. My client, Renee Montague, has resided at this property for over forty years, um, and she, she's worried about the reduction in the value of the property that she owns. In addition, um, the signage, again, it would affect the character, the residential character of this neighborhood. Uh, and all this increased use make it a detriment to the neighborhood, that's what my clients believe, that make it a detriment to the, the neighborhood, reduce the value of her property, and for all these reasons, my clients are opposed to the granting of this special permit.
Ask a question? Yeah, uh, we're gonna have, can we, can we, can we ask you a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
When you say increase of food, she, I thought they said nothing was gonna be consumed on the premises, so would, you mean like if something goes bad?
Foilage of candy or candy wrappers or any of the food-related trash, if you're making a gift basket and there's some part of the item that's not used, anything that would go into the trash that would increase the, um, food and that type of item in the trash, from what, do you mean purely residential to, uh, commercial use?
Okay. Anyone else, uh, opposed? Anyone else that's neither for or against?
Can I speak before again?
You certainly may.
Uh, mainly just speaking to the fact that-
Oh, uh, name again.
Sorry, my name's Charles Harrislock, I live in, in four Main Street. Um, like I said, we're before here today, um, to represent everybody, obviously, the applicant, petitioner, and also consider, um, some of the things that might be said in opposition. Um, good points were made, um, I would, I would note that the, um, the person that spoke last, um, they haven't been living in the home for quite some time now. Um, they did put the home on the market for a period of time at a certain price, it did not sell, and then it went off market and that was that particular property. Um, the one thing I would like to say is that we've done some, you know, work with regards to the traffic and we actually spent time, um, to really define what would be detrimental. There, you know, there is some case law out there that talks about, um, assuming or creating detriment from personal opinions or thoughts and things like that, and that goes to home values as well. I understand, we have one person here that does do some appraisals, but it's only really one side of the picture when you look at something like that, without actually really digging and seeing what the numbers might be with there on the future. From what I understand, all our assessments went up in the, recently, um, so home values seem to be on the rise in Groveland. Um, the one case that, you know, mentions about this, this, this idea of detriment and, um, creating the assumption of it just from an opinion, um, is Slanderwick, four forty-seven Mass, at thirty-three quoting Barbinick. Um, and it states, um, specifically with regards to, you, you have to have some kind of binding. Um, these are clearly concerns, um, one of the things that was brought up was rubbish, and as a member of the community and understanding that, um, our neighbor is right across the street, Brenda's neighbor is right across the street from her, you know, the idea is to make provisions in the stipulations to satisfy that. Maybe we don't have a dumpster, or there should be no dumpster on the property. Um, any type of, we were hooked to sell, any type of candy or any type of rubbish, and hopefully there wouldn't be that type of issue with regards to it. But there are other provisions that could be made with regards to leaving and, and taking that type of, any type of waste product away from the property, not leaving it on the general type of trash, um, for the public, if there is a level of waste that might be there as a result of that at all. So, I just wanted to mainly comment that, you know, we understand that there will be pros and cons, there will be some discussion and that I hope the board, um, will consider that with regards to, you know, stipulations to make sure that, um, both the petitioner and those that might have concerns, um, if those concerns satisfy someone. Anything else?
You all set?
I got a question for you.
Sure.
Flowers access rubbish, do you own a pickup truck, do you own an SUV?
We own, we own a couple SUVs.
Could you go down to G Mellow disposal and get rid of them for two dollars a bag?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so we, we know, we know there's, there's avenues and I just, you know, I want, you know, I understand-
In other words, you're in a residential area, you're only allowed so many bags-
Absolutely.
So many barrels-
Sure.
For a residential area. So, if you access, they're not gonna pick it up anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so if, you can't have a dumpster, so what you have to do is, is, if this, you know, flies, you'd have to throw in the back of your truck and throw, and go down to G Mellow disposal, be very cheap, you know?
And that would be our intent, so I mean, again, I just wanted to state that, uh, with regards to this, you know, there's resolutions, there's solutions, you know, to make this, um, something that is agreeable and, and not any type of real detriment, detriment, not one that might be created just from opinion or some perceptions.
One more question, um, in your, your stipulations, you're saying that the, um, the square footage of the proposed business home occupation's eight hundred plus or minus, can you tell me what the overall square footage of the entire building is?
The, the actual-
Approximately?
You, you, the space that's used right now is around four thousand square feet.
So-
It's more than that, but yeah, seven, so, so there's additional probably square footage in the building, but we don't have a true measurement of that, but it's stated in the assessment of four thousand square feet.
Okay, so it would be reduced to thirty-two hundred when this-
It, it, yes, it, it would be the, the living space of the property would be.
Is something different?
Sorry?
You, would you like to say something different than you did?
Yeah, it was actually on some of the points that, um, the attorney here-
Go ahead.
Okay.
State your name again, please.
Sure. It's Linoa Katnack. Um, so listening to all of this, my summation overall is it comes to a gray area regarding zoning and the residential versus the business area. What it comes down to is the fact that we cannot decide whether this candy shop falls into the same wheel that is the artist's residence or the tailor, the two examples that Chuck gave us. And I find it interesting that the abutter brought up the waste issue. I have a friend in West Newbury who actually does have, um, she's an artist in residence, she has a gallery, she works from home. And she has a lot of waste in the form of acrylics, oils, wood, nails. She holds events where members of the public can gather and look at all the different art that she produces. She has visiting artists come in. My question was how is that so different and are the, there's different elements and problems to do with waste that you get from the artist space and the waste from the candy shop? But it doesn't seem to me to be that much difference between the two of them. The other thing that I wanted to bring up as well was regarding, uh, Mr. Chairperson's comments about Brenda taking her operation to a place that has su- suitable zoning further into Groveland. That made me think, why do we have residential zoning for in-home businesses? Why could we even bother having it? Why don't we just say no stick to the business area? And I was thinking, well, part of the reason must be for people who maybe can't go to the residential business area because they have children to look after, they have responsibilities, and maybe have disabled relatives need to look after. That's why I think we provide that possibility. So on that level, I think we have to look at Brenda's needs and what we've worked for her. It simply wouldn't work for her necessarily to go down into the business area and that's why we offered the opportunity of a home business for people, it's for flexible earning. And I just wanted to point that out and I hope that will be taken into consideration.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I think, I'm trying to make a mo- uh, a motion to, um, close a hearing, public hearing, um, make a motion.
Close the, oh, yeah.
Close a public hearing at, uh, what?
Nine-
Nine forty-two.
Nine forty-two? Mark, make a motion.
I'll make a motion, close over here at nine forty-two.
Seconded by Casey, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, can, can we have another motion for, uh, five minutes, I need to get a, make a water.
I do too.
Motion for a five-minute recess.
Make a motion, Casey, uh, seconded myself, all in favor, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Is there a water?
Yes, there is, there's a bathroom, if you need to, please, the light goes on automatically. Oh, I see, check the light, go over here, sorry. Can you come outside? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know. I was wondering which factor I know. Can you see the minutes?
We have to sign them or?
We have to vote on this still.
Oh, we didn't vote on them yet?
No.
So, yeah, so. And did you tell Dan yet about his meeting? Okay, just to remind you. You get paid overtime after nine o'clock?
I got a town meeting tomorrow, it's a little warm though, so.
Yeah, do you have to, do you spend most of the night at meetings?
I'm starting to.
Yeah?
I've been there twelve years, eleven, twelve years, and I see the last year, I might, I always did some, but it's just like the last year. I'm three, four, five a month. That's all, you know, I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot, but I want a week, you know?
But it is, when you don't get home, especially when you're out in the, where do you live?
Yeah, well, I spend a lot, you know, go back to Brighton, Boston, but still, as you say, I'm still sometime in Halloween. I'm just getting, okay.
We have an application, or we had an application in, in Provincetown.
We represent that.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a long way.
It's two hours.
It's really far. I'm-
From here, it's probably three.
I'm tasked to go file the bu- building permit on it too, can I just mail it?
We don't have these interruptions, you better learn how to sing and dance or something.
I don't know why I got tapped for talent, I mean, these, these guys are clearly the showboaters.
Something, people be turning their TVs off here, right?
Yep.
I can't put a commercial on.
No, they just get green screen?
They just get a green screen, yeah.
Um, just over a year.
Do you like it?
Yeah, it's good, um, things are really busy right now, so, um, I've kinda just been going ninety miles an hour.
Unfortunately, neither stops.
It, summer was like really slow.
Oh, was it?
Really, really slow.
You got a billable requirement, so?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm working on it right now.
Where's the?
Didn't work without going, yeah.
I used to say, taking my vacation at my desk.
Yeah, exactly.
I wanted to know I'm missing. All the home, uh, very brand new, uh, I can't watch it. Unbelievable chip foods, I can't believe anybody would be, chip foods, therefore, I say, just looking at it.
Chip chip foods.
I'm just like, that's, I can't, I can't read these cards. New showtime, not a box.
Wow.
And I don't know how to, I don't know how to tape it, you know?
Yeah, I gotta get up at five, so.
You can do it on demand.
Huh?
You can get on demand.
I don't, I know, I don't know how to do that stuff. Reese says that.
Show your kid or somebody, or your wife or somebody.
No, I'm not gonna marry, but she's, may as well be, but she, she doesn't know how to do it either. She's done.
Yeah, I just, you know, I get up at five, so, it's like I get tired by now.
The line went up at four thirty for me, for me to set up.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Yeah, and I have to sit down a long while.
Oh, yeah, so everybody has to get up, right?
Yeah, then she grabs too much, oh, goodbye, you know, it's like, am I making too much noise? And I say, get out of here, I'm retiring, get the water. She's ten years younger than me.
So much for that sandwich I have waiting for me for next.
Were you anywhere before Copeland?
No, I, I actually, I'm a little older, I, I used to live in Vermont, she does housing for about thirteen, fourteen years. Went to law school down here in Portland. Two years clerk, proposed clerk for Judge Kell.
Yeah, I did a short stint with Mary Lynn Harrington, um-
Oh, did you, Ray?
Yep.
Nice guy, real nice guy.
Um, I was, um, I clerked in Maine, it's a pure career. For a job, they had somebody went out on a attorney leave, so I filled in for a little bit while I was still job hunting.
So what happens if?
So, yeah, I never really had to sit at the table, but certainly been in the realm of having to advise the board before.
Yeah, it's, uh-
And they're growing like crazy, they are.
Right, right.
They hired like-
Ray?
Yeah, they've hired like six new attorneys.
Well, he got Wellsley.
Got Wellsley.
He got, um-
Got Carlisle.
You got Carlisle? That's a good one.
Yeah, that was cool.
Wellsley's a good one, yeah, very good, um, we have west and guns going on every June.
You can, somebody else recently.
I wouldn't doubt it, I, I have a- Hurry up, I wanna eat. Town council, every time I've ever dealt, it's usually, he's on our side, but it's been, um, quite the water withdrawal permits, those, the environmental stuff. But, yeah, I heard that he's really intelligent, he's still intelligent. Bobraski in town.
Yeah, yeah, before I was at Robinson College and-
Oh, yeah, of course I have.
Newburyport, it was just, it was off on one other attorney. Bobraski's office, I walk by it every day.
Uh, Lisa, Lisa Nead?
Yep.
She, you ever go for those, too?
No.
She's tough.
No, I have to witness the board coward, whatever. Nothing like the former mayor presenting.
Courts don't open till nine o'clock, when you gotta get work and, I don't know.
Um, 'cause I don't work at the courts, I work for banks, they want- They want their documents when they want their documents.
They want their documents at nine o'clock, that means we have to get up at five.
They wanted them last week, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, me too.
Are we back?
Uh, Dan had to go.
He's back.
Dan's back, oh, Dan's back. Sorry.
You can't get the meeting on?
But I gotta get back to the meeting.
Okay.
But I. No, no, I'm in the middle of the meeting. Okay. You'll have to pick us up tomorrow.
Okay, are we?
No, right away.
Okay.
Yeah. He, he left the phone, so he's done talking.
He didn't know how to hang it up.
Okay, all right, have a good night, bye.
Looking for the dial.
Okay, okay, we, we need a motion to read adjourn at uh, nine fifty.
Make the motion to read adjourn at nine fifty.
Let's talk about that motion. Seconded by Dan, Rock, all's in favor? Okay, we're back in now, now we're gonna do the. Now, that's what we do. I think we gotta, we gotta look at the, the provisions of the home occupation, which uh, for the record, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it.
The rule of law.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna read it.
Iraq.
Okay, that's exactly what I'm doing. Okay, uh, home occupation, is an occupation or profession which is customarily carried on in a dwelling unit or a building or other structure accessory to the dwelling and is carried on by a member of the family residing in the dwelling unit and is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential purposes and which conforms to the following additional conditions. The occupation or profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal business or within a building or structure accessory thereto. No person outside of the family shall be employed in the home occupation. There shall be no exterior display, comma, no exterior sign except as permitted under section thirteen hundred, comma, no exterior storage of materials and no other exterior indication of home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal building. No offensive noise, vibrations, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare shall be produced. In particular, a home occupation shall, a ho- a home occupation includes, comma, but is not limited to the following. Art studio, dressmaker, professional office of a physician, dentist, lawyer, engineer, architect, real estate agent, or broker, or accountant within a dwelling occupied by the same. However, a home occupation shall not be interpreted to include the following. Tourist home, barber shop, commercial stables and kennels, restaurants, tea rooms, dancing instruction, band instruction, excuse me, band instrument instruction, car rentals and homes, or mortuary establishments. Now, I'm just gonna make a couple comments and then I'll quiet down. I think that clearly, uh, there's, there's two, the two, two problems I have. Clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential, residential purposes. Now, the dwelling unit currently has two cars coming and going. One-on-one driveway, this, this exhibit B doesn't show another driveway, but every time I've gone by, there's another, been another car over here on the, on the left-hand side. So, in order to operate a retail establishment, which this is, I, I would assume that they, they are anticipating customers. So that, I'm not sure how I can uh, justify that it's clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential purpose when you're having multiple cars coming and going from the property. Which brings me to my second issue, which was brought up by Mister Hazelak. And that is the fact that a study was done relative to a parcel in West Newbury which indicated that there is, I, I've got three hundred cars a day, but the, and some, some of them has, has six hundred cars a day. So, i- if you haven't that many cars going by the property, it seems to me that that, that's going to create a hazard for those people coming and going to the property, as well as any cars exiting the property. With that type of traffic flow, that's a, that's a pretty substantial traffic flow. The other, the other, the other uh, issue that I have is that it says, uh, no other exterior indication of a home occupation or vari- variation from the residential character of the principal building. So I'd like to ask the board, uh, how many home, homes in a residential area have the paved parking with three lights? Have paved parking for customers with three area lights? I mean, and it says, it states, this is not, this is not a gray area, this is that no other exterior indication of the home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal building. Well, if you're gonna put a parking area in with lights, how many houses in Groveland have parking areas with three lights? With that, go ahead, what, what do you have to say?
Um, I have to say, I, I appreciate the thought that has gone into your presentation and uh, you clearly have um, a really great idea for a business. Um, that I think, you know, you heard from a lot of your neighbors and um, and townsfolk that would really love to patron such a building. Um, I'm hung up on this being a customarily carried-on occupation in a dwelling unit. Um, I think, I think there is a, a clear distinction between the two categories of uses. Um, and that what is, in my view, a customary home occupation is one in which it's something that you ordinarily would do in your home. Um, so like, a sewing room that then a dressmaker might use, or an office that could be used for an attorney's office or a, you know, psychiatrist or such. And that I, I just don't see a retail even as interesting and um, special as this one seems to be, as fitting into the definition of a, a home occupation.
Thank you.
That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, Dan?
Do I go second, or do we go left or right?
Well, I thought.
Go ahead, go ahead. I don't see anything wrong with the traffic.
You can go left.
When you just brought up the traffic thing, I don't see anything wrong with the traffic. I'm not saying that Brenda's not gonna have any business there, but I don't see three, four, five cars at a time in that driveway. I mean, if it is, it is, but I don't see that. And you have Lindsay Way in the back there, there's, I don't know how many cars are coming out of there, so as far as that, I don't see a problem. What I don't get is the um, the parking with the lights, what was the parking with the lights gonna be?
No, what I said was, was, they, they're proposing a paved parking lot to the left of the building with three area lights. And, and I'm, and, and I, I think clearly, under the, on the ordinance, it says that no other exterior indication of a home occupation or variation from residential character of the principal building. So I'm, what, so I'm, I'm saying to you that, that they're putting in a substantial parking area for customers on the left-hand side of the lot with three area lights, and that's.
And what happens if they, should forget about the lights?
Well, but, but he, you know, it's just not.
Huh? What are, what are the hours, the hours again, or what?
What, what is that?
What were the hours of operation?
Uh, the hours of operation.
Eight to six.
Eight to six?
No, ten, ten to six, uh, and then Sunday, twelve to six.
So, it gets dark, at worst time of the day, it gets, at this time of the, where it's, gets real dark, it doesn't, on a sunny day, it gets dark around five. Uh, I don't see where you need any lights, cause in the summertime, it's.
Well, uh, it, what, what it does say, it says holidays, so, so I'm assuming that.
Okay, yeah, 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 all right, but still, they're only open till.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, you asked a question, let me finish it. Uh, they're talking about uh, having hours no earlier than eight AM and no later than nine PM on holidays, on major holidays. So, I would think uh, you, uh, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas and stuff, and at that point.
I don't think they're gonna be open Thanksgiving.
Well, no, but prior to, prior, prior to, what I, I guess the point I'm making is that, is that from five o'clock to nine o'clock, it's gonna be dark.
You know something? The Garettes live there, I went to a Christmas party there, there was thirty cars, you know what I'm saying? I just think it's getting a little nicked, oh, okay, you know, no, before I came here, I wasn't too sure, I said, you know, res- you know, retail in this area, he made a good presentation.
Yeah.
And, you know.
I, I don't disagree, but.
In the way, when I saw the pictures of the place, and I've been in this town a long time, and I, I don't see a problem with this thing, okay?
Good. How about you, Dan?
Like I said before, I think it's a matter of degree, you know, the, the scope of the, the business. Um, does it fit in a residential neighborhood, it's residentially zoned? And um, if it doesn't stand out as a, you drive by and there is a commercial establishment there. So I, I, I think it needs to blend in uh, with the residential character of the neighborhood. Um, so, I, I, you know, they talk about signage and uh.
I have a problem with signage too.
Yeah, I got a problem with the signage, um, it says, uh, should be no exterior display nor exterior sign except as permitted under the section thirteen hundred, and then it goes on to say, uh, or variation from residential character of the principal building. So I think if you were gonna have a small sign, it would be on the building.
On the building.
And not at street, um, street side, as typical of a commercial establishment. If it's on your house, I mean, it's.
You know, you know what I just don't like is you have somebody like them, they, they, they make this big plan out, they pay three hundred and fifty dollars, and you got people that'll have yard sale signs constantly out front of their house, and then they, you know, and it's just, I just think, you know, I've turned myself around on this a little bit, and I, I have no problem with it. That's my opinion for the whole thing. I gotta make a decision, and I think.
Can I continue?
Yeah, I'm sorry, well, usually you're the only guy that interrupts everybody, so it's my turn.
All right, yeah, that's all right. So, a- a- again, you know, is it a customary um, home office, a, a, a home, a lot of these are office, uh, intangible types of business, uh, they list out physicians, dentists, lawyers. So the art studio, is that an art gallery or an art studio, I don't know, is it semantics on that? Um, is it an artist in there painting, uh, sculpting or doing something like that? So it's not, um, it doesn't say it can't be sold on the premises, you know, it's, the, the bylaw's vague, so, you know. You know, the issue, the issue is the interpretation.
Yeah, but I, but I.
It starts off by what's customarily.
Yeah, but Dan, I don't think, I, I don't think, I don't think it, the.
So, so I've never heard of a candy store, a retail candy store out of a house.
Yeah.
But that's just me, I mean, I just, I've never heard of that, so.
Obviously, you're not a customer.
So it's not customary, I think, I think it fails on the top line.
I do too, yeah.
All right, and I'm pro-business anybody, I'm CPA, if you want, anyone knows me. But uh, there's a time, place, and a manner for almost everything in life, uh, not everything, there are exceptions. And uh, we have zoning, um, the purpose of zoning uh, is um, so that you maintain character and there is a, a, a place for um, um, carry in on uh, um, certain things, uh, whether it be.
Certain things.
Residential usage.
Hold on.
So it all comes down to property rights and what people bought into when they bought into that neighborhood, they, people bought into a residential neighborhood and they didn't expect.
Yeah, I mean, the, the.
That they would be commercial establishments absent a formal change of the zoning district.
Yeah, I, I think clearly, clearly, the, you, you, you're right on to something here.
So.
When, when the person bought, bought the property, it was in a uh, uh, RB residential zone and, and as today, as we sit here tonight, it's still in an RB residential zone. So, it isn't as though the town changed the zone after they bought it, like it was commercial when they bought it, and now it's RB. It's been RB, it's, it's, it's always been uh, RB and, and it ha- and the standards have always had to have been met, these haven't changed since.
But, but I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna read into the bylaw here and try to interpret this, you've got an art studio now, you know. I, I could draw an inference that that's for an artist. Uh, the other argument could be, well, they buy and sell other artists' goods and they sell retail. But based upon what's below it, I mean, uh, typically a lawyer, an engineer, and an architect, uh, resellers of goods and services, they sell their own services, the uh, I assume.
Plan.
I assume that the art studio is run by the artist, um, and the dressmaker, I assume, makes the dresses. So these are, these are uh, people that create. Um, some of them are intangibles, the dressmaker and the art studio, those tangible uh, goods that they produce individually. This business, I don't think it's customary as, if you were gonna make home baked cookies in your kitchen and sell the home baked goo- cookies, that I would say that's a home-based business under the, the, the meaning of the bylaw. So that you can make your, you know, um, you know. It's like Mrs. Fields cookies, you know, probably their most famous cookies, or I guess, you know, Mrs. Fields maybe.
I don't think that's any different than what she's doing.
Chip the whole like.
Hold on, hold on.
So, I'm trying to read it to the intent of the bylaw, because, because there are some vagaries and ambiguities. So what was the uh, uh, purpose of this uh, bylaw? And I think that it was to uh, limit it to uh, um, people that work and create their own products. I can't see in here any example of a reseller. Um, what I, you know, it's arguable that a dentist could have quite a lot of foot traffic and car doors slamming in and out if they had a dentist chair and they had one customer and there's five sitting in the chair waiting, so, um, that could be a, a foot traffic or a, um, but, you know, what they listed here also is another thing I'm thinking about is your business that you propose is, is a walk. But it's.
Hold on, excuse me.
It, no.
Yeah, I know, but.
No, you ought to make it have store, store hours so that it's a walk-in business. So, is an art studio a walk-in business? Could be if it's a gallery, uh, dressmaker, you walk in, here's my dress, I suppose. So this, but these other ones, this is typical to walk into the uh, engineer's office and say, like a drawer, and I suppose you could have walk-in hours. But it's not typical, so I'm hung up on what's customary, and I don't uh, know of any retail, um, outlets, um, I don't know of any, I don't think it's customary. I think it fails on the first one, it's not, it's not customary. So, I'm not gonna believe that.
Well, he had me convinced if I can talk about the Posey Shop, and I remember the Posey Shop, it was the busiest flower shop, it was right down the street from them, I'm, and uh, he brought that up, and I, that kind of, maybe I'm just in Groveland too long, and I'm just thinking, maybe not, you know, this and that, but I think there's less home businesses in that area right now than there ever was before. And I don't think this is gonna bother the traffic, bother the neighbors, I only saw one per, the lawyer came in, there was no other people coming in who were opposed to it. So, after being through this meeting, I wasn't too sure when I came in here, and after this meeting, after what Charles Hazelak explained to me, um, I'm in favor of it.
Any other comments, Dan?
Yeah, I, I think I said what I need to say.
You're all set?
Yeah.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Well. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, okay? And uh, it's gonna be based on uh, case number two-one-two-dash-seven, a special permit to operate a uh, candy store, what's the name of it? Yeah, uh, specially candy and gift shop, okay? All right, and it's uh, it's, it's the, the uh, the rule of law that we're, that we're going to follow in our decision would be section three oh one point two oh point two, uh, referencing home occupation. And based on that. section of the bylaws for zoning for the town of Groveland, I make a motion to deny special permit, uh, with the following, for the following stipulated reasons. Number one, I'll read it real slow for you. The property is located in an RB residential zone. Number two, retail stores are not customarily permitted in an RB residential zone. Number three, the applicant stated with documentation from engineers that three hundred vehicles travel by his property daily, which creates a hazard to customers and, uh, uh, foot traffic customers as well as customers exiting the property. Number four, the proposed paved parking area, area, uh, in exhibit B with three lights is not customarily found in residential properties as outlined in the ordinance that states no other exterior indication of home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal business. Number five, oops, uh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, uh... And then finally, number six, that the, that the business proposed appears to be similar to the store areas as found in, um, stores similar to Cracker Barrel, and is not, uh, uh, in any way consistent with residential properties. I'm sorry, what, what number was that?
It was actually five.
Number six, number six, number six is, um, the board received testimony from a gentleman who is a certified appraiser and stated that the operation of a retail store would, uh, reduce a budding values of properties. And with that, that's my motion. Any other second?
Make friendly amendment?
Go ahead.
This is pretty much, uh, one of the major, um, reasons for my decision, uh, the resale of goods.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
The retail level...
Yeah.
Is inconsistent with the customary home occupation.
Yeah. You wanna make that a, like a, like seven?
Yeah, I wanna make that delineated up on there, that, that...
So, state that one more time, did, did you get that?
I didn't get all of it.
Okay, state one more time.
Resale of goods at retail.
The sale of, or the resale of goods at retail.
The resale of goods at retail.
Yeah, is, oh yeah, is not customary. Right, is not customary?
Is not a customary home occupation.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
The resale of goods.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any other discussion, go ahead.
One question, I, I wasn't clear where the three lights was in the, in the materials.
We're here on, uh, exhibit A.
But there's, that there, oh, is it just number three, or that there were gonna be three lights?
Yeah, three lights, uh, they're here.
Was it testimony that there was gonna be three?
Down, downward cutoff lumineous region plus style permitted.
Okay, and the statement that there were three was from testimony?
No, there's three, I read it in here, there's three, somewhere in here, there was three. Somewhere I read it as three.
I don't remember reading that.
Are we here? State of course, oh, sorry, by exhibit...
But I think that's number three on the list.
Exhibit three, oh, okay, well, I'm sorry, you're right. I was thinking three as in three, but maybe with three as in three.
I just proposed to amend the, the motion to take out the number.
That's okay, let's see, where was that? That is the, the parking area. Number four, Julie, take out the, uh, lights. Just have it, the parking area is not consistent with residential.
I mean, I think you include lights, but maybe just not, that there's three lights.
Yeah, I thought that it's, you're right, you know what, the three is, in parentheses, was, uh, was...
I think it was referencing which number, yeah.
Did you get that?
Proposed paved parking area in exhibit three is not, um, in, I didn't...
Residential, you know, is, is, is not customarily found in residential area, uh, uh, properties. Read, uh, read this, uh, this, yeah.
Yeah, we confirm.
Are we all right with this? Okay, you're set, okay. Anything else? Okay. Any other discussions, all those in favor?
Do we have a second?
Oh, 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 you, oh, we need a second, you, you, Dan seconded.
I made a friendly amendment.
Okay, okay, we need a second.
Did you vote no?
On the amendment, I just read it, okay? Do we have a second?
Second amendment.
Dan, Dan seconded with amendments. Any discussion now? Okay, all those in favor of denying the application two thousand twelve dash seven?
Based on those points.
Based on all the points? Three? Dan, Tom, Casey, opposed. Mark McCabe, it's, it, uh, denied on a three to one. Okay, we've already done all the legal terms.
No, we haven't, we didn't vote on the minutes.
Oh, that's right, you're, you're, we're out of minutes, I had them right here. Okay, thank you. I, I do have a change, I think your, your name is with a K, not a C, isn't it?
It is with a K.
Can you, can you change that to a K? Okay, thank you, I'll just... Look at that. Okay, uh, we need a motion to approve the minutes of October seventh.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October seventh.
Mark, make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion, all those in favor? Passed. How about a motion to, uh, adjourn at, uh, ten twenty?
I got one point, I mean, I was late, but I don't know if you discussed it. Mark, when I come in, mentioned the, uh, the, the Herald.
We did, and, and, you know, you know, yeah, we did, I tell you...
Was there a resolution, can we save some money?
No, what, what we're gonna do is, I'll check and see...
Sorry to have you hit on a...
No, 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 that's good, no, no. I'll, I'll check and see what their schedule is, because the problem is, they only meet once a...
We don't know how many times zoning meets over there, and...
Yeah, I wanted to see, you know, I, I'll check with Havil and see, you know, you guys meet, how, how does that work on your scheduling? Because if we were to, uh, no, hold on, no, 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 but, see, if we u- utilize them, uh, what happens is, we, we're gonna shorten the period of people being able to, uh, apply for the permit by one week. Because we'd have to advertise it two weeks in advance, you know, one week and one week.
I have a suggestion for that.
What's that?
If you file early, it's X, and if you file later, we incur an additional charge, and you charge them another fifty bucks. I mean, you can have a, you can have two different fees on it.
Oh, you mean, so, so you'd, you'd advertise it two different papers?
Why not?
Now you're just...
If you can advertise, let's just say if you...
Now you're going right back to that.
No, here we go. No, here we go, if you, if you're gonna get your ads in before the fifteen, say.
Yeah.
Okay, and I haven't counted the days, on the new statute. Say the fifteen Chicago, boom, you get it in here, and the advertising costs you forty-four dollars. Right, if you don't, they don't make the paper in that paper, because it's less frequent, right? If you gotta go to the other newspaper...
Oh, okay, I see what you mean.
You, 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 you still have, might have five days for us to meet our statutory notice requirement. But it's gonna cost us another hundred dollars, we'll charge the customer. If you get in early, which is probably better for everybody...
And you're paying for that anyway right now, on our regular...
So, you're just passing the additional cost on.
Yeah, but, but Dan, what happens, though, is that there are people that, that come in at the last minute, and we, and we rush to get them on the agenda.
And you whack them more, 'cause we have to pay a higher advertising fee. I mean, it's, you're just passing a cost on to the customer.
This is the guy that wants to save the taxpayer money, now he wants to whack them more.
Whatever, you know.
No, listen to me.
But I, I'd like to find out, I said, what, what, so the resolution was, I said, let's just check with Havil and see what their timeframe is for their...
If they come in at the last minute, they have, we have to go with the more expensive advertising.
They come in the last minute, we might not even be able to get it in any...
Yeah, see, I, I, I think that, I think you're, you're creating an issue.
So, there, there's no option for them to save money at that point.
Yeah, I know, but I think, yeah...
Well, I'm okay with us using two different vendors.
Yeah, but see, I don't think, see, the problem is...
I don't think that's complicated.
Yeah, well, I say, but it's not, it's not, to me, it's gonna be, then you gotta, then you gotta document that you, you advertised two of them in this paper, and one of them in that paper.
No, it doesn't have to be unanimous.
I don't know, that's it.
Where does the application get filed? With the clerk.
Yeah.
So, the clerk looks on the calendar, if you file your, your permit, uh, request by this day, this is the fake, three hundred and fifty bucks. You file it after that, it's three ninety-five, because it costs us more money. Maybe that'll...
Let, let me...
Well, I'm just checking to that here.
Yeah, I wanted to check, I told him, I'm gonna check in Havil and see, because they may meet at the end of the month. It's, it's sort of, we meet the first Wednesday, they meet, they may meet the last Wednesday, and it works for them, so let's see.
I wish I had checked that.
It doesn't have to be an all or nothing on it, does it?
I don't know.
How complicated is to use two different newspapers?
Well, I, wouldn't you be surprised?
I don't like that, are you?
I don't know, I just, there's room for error by doing it, that's my only...
It's just that, you know, send in the Apollo thirteen...
The other thought we had was...
You know, putting an ad in a newspaper.
We're gonna make a motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute, hold on, oh, go ahead.
The only other thought we had was, um, to make the filing date earlier in the month.
The early bird, say, gets the worm, they save money.
Just make it, make it the first instead of the tenth.
They pay less on their advertising cost.
Well, let, let, let me just check, let me second, check in Havil, and I, I'll do it tomorrow. I'll check and see, if they may be at the end of the month, which makes that work for them. I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not crazy about having two different papers on the same meeting, I think that, that's...
I see meeting was a little weird.
I think that, that's a problem, but...
But 'cause they're not separate notices?
Well, they are separate notices.
Well, then what difference does it make?
Well, 'cause I...
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Well, 'cause, 'cause someone says, hey, I didn't, I didn't look in, I, I looked in the, uh, in the Gazette, and I thought that, that wasn't on the agenda, and all of a sudden, I didn't look in the other one, and, and I, you know, I wasn't, I think it, I mean, I, I don't like it.
They're gonna have to check the internet, 'cause the papers are a dinosaur, that statue needs to go bye-bye.
Well, we, you're, you're on the, you're select, I think, yeah.
Are we gonna do rent for the legislature to change the newspaper or our statue?
Okay, how about a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn at ten twenty-five, ten twenty-four.
Second, all those in favor? Okay. Dan, give me my pen.
I've moved...
Yeah, save my pens for...
You proved it?
The meeting.
I moved, Tom seconded it. Are we supposed to give the pens back to...